Thank you and good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday, June one, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Milton Select Board, which is conducted pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. This act, signed by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, includes the extension of the remote meeting provisions, and accordingly, all those will be taken by roll call. My name is Arthur Doyle, Chair of the Milton Select Board, and I'd like to introduce or have introduced the other members of the board, please.
Good evening, Mike Zulus, Vice Chair.
Good evening, Richard Wells.
Good evening, Aaron Bradley, Member.
Good evening, Roxanne Musto, Member.
Thank you, and Anne Marie.
Anne Marie Thagantown Administrator.
Indianapolis Administrator Assistant to this last board.
Could everybody please join along with Senator Timmeltine, who's with us this evening, for the pledge of allegiance? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to judge a public comment with just a reminder that the Select Board, by practice, has fifteen minutes of public comment with each speaker allocated up to three minutes following the amount of time that is given. If there is remaining time and a speaker who has spoken previously wishes to speak again, with no other speaker indicating that they wish to do so, they may speak a second time. The first person to have joined us to speak in public session this evening is Senator Timmeltie. So Senator Timmeltie, we give the floor to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Chair Doyle. Right off the bat, I'd like to congratulate Select Board Member Musto and Select Board Member Bradley. I've had the chance, obviously, to spend a little bit of time with you each around town, with Member Bradley on Monday of Memorial Day, and of course, with new Member Roxanne Musto as well on Memorial Day. So I just want to congratulate you both. I look forward to working with you in your new capacity. So, congrats. Chair Doyle, Member Wells, Vice Chair Zulus, and of course, our Town Administrator Anne Marie Fagan. It's a privilege to be here before you tonight and before all our viewers around town. Just wanted to give a quick legislative update. First of all, Senate Bill two-five-two-six, a home rule petition, which will obviously pass town meeting overwhelmingly, was supported by this board, which is an act raising the income threshold for senior real property tax deferments to the past town of Milton, was signed into law on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is chapter seventy-one of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two, and my thanks, of course, was great team effort with Representative Bill Driscoll and Representative Fluker Oakley on the House side, and myself on the Senate side shepherding this bill through. I filed it, and Rep. Driscoll and Rep. Fluker Oakley co-sponsored it and were strong supporters in the House. So it will provide some real property tax relief to our seniors who are very deserving of this. Obviously, our seniors have made our town what it is, and anything we can do, obviously, to help our seniors and help our seniors stay in their homes is very important to us all. So I just want to thank every single member of town meeting who's supported this initiative and just informed the board formally that it has been signed into law and it is now in effect. Last week, we completed our Senate budget exercise. The House completed their budget exercise in late April. We completed our budget exercise last Thursday, early evening. It's a forty-nine-point-seven-eight-billion-dollar document. And some of the highlights that it includes for the town of Milton, in terms of chapter seventy, which is a to our public schools, ten million, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. And unrestricted government assistance is three million, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. Some earmarks that I filed trying to change the budget to benefit the towns that I represent and, obviously, affect policy changes on a statewide level that I believe will be beneficial to us all. I filed an amendment seeking twenty thousand dollars for overtime patrols on Route twenty-eight Randolph Ave, which is obviously a great concern for this board, for every citizen of the town, and myself, and, of course, Representative Driscoll and Representative Fluker Oakley. I filed that to the Senate budget, and it was successfully adopted. I want to thank Chief John King for working with me on this in terms of calibrating what type of coverage for twenty thousand dollars we could extend to Randolph Ave, Route twenty-eight, and Chief King estimated that it would be a hundred to a hundred and fifty additional four-hour patrols on Randolph Ave, Route twenty-eight, which is obviously critical. We've sustained horrific accidents in recent years, and sadly and tragically, it has involved fatalities. So I'm just trying, in the short term, to provide as much coverage and, quite simply, slow cars down on Randolph Ave. And obviously, our police department does excellent work, and I just want to inform the board of that. Also, an amendment that I filed along the same vein, and again, in consultation with Chief King, sought twenty thousand dollars for overtime patrols for Route one thirty-eight. And again, Chief King and I calibrated what kind of coverage this would provide from the Milton Police, beyond the outstanding work they already accomplish on a daily basis. This, as is the case with Randolph Ave, Route twenty-eight, Chief King estimates that it will bring in additional hundred to a hundred and fifty four-hour patrols on Route one thirty-eight in Milton. And again, tragically, we've sustained fatalities on this road quite recently, I might add, and obviously horrific accidents over the years. So we're trying, obviously, to slow cars down and, quite simply, to save lives. Beyond that, an amendment that I filed sought forty thousand dollars for the design and construction of our Milton Animal Shelter. Obviously, this is a fraction of what the cost ultimately will be, but it is something that will help and, obviously, put towards the cause of what we want to have in this town, which is a first-class facility in terms of an animal shelter. So I applaud all our volunteers, everybody who's worked on this project. It will get across the goal line, I'm sure, and it will be a first-rate facility when it does. But this is just one small way for myself and the Massachusetts State Senate to help out in our version of the budget. Additionally, something that I file every single year to our amendment in the way of an amendment, which was also successfully adopted, is twenty thousand dollars for our Milton Substance Use Disorder Coalition, led by Ministers Kinsella. This coalition does outstanding work. My first year in the state senate, we have a tradition, what is the inaugural speech given by each and every member. It's something that's very important to us, and obviously, we have a lot of important priorities. My inaugural speech was made and discussed substance use disorder and the fact that we need to support the coalitions. I have represented nine substance use disorder coalitions. Milton does great work. Each and every substance use disorder coalition in my district does tremendous work. And this amendment sought twenty thousand dollars for each of the coalitions. I'm a big believer in providing the resources to our organizations on the front lines, such as our Substance Use Disorder Coalition here in Milton, led by Mrs. Kinsella, that do great work, and let the experts and the volunteers who are in the trenches every day doing God's work make the decisions. So that was successfully adopted. Beyond that, I inserted language in the state senate budget mandating that the Department of Public Health perform a study on the impact of airplane noise within all the communities, within the Massport Community Advisory Committee. Obviously, we unfortunately are with this next-gen system that was instituted in December of two thousand and thirteen, we literally are under an aviation superhighway, as are many of the communities with the Massport CAC. And this would conduct to, obviously, under the aegis of the Department of Public Health, a public health study to ascertain the deleterious public health effects that are incumbent upon the next-gen system and the frequent flights that traverse the Massport CAC communities. It is information that the aviation industry does not want out there, for sure, and it's also information that the FAA does not want out there. But it's something that needs to go public, and it needs, the public needs to know what is occurring with these airplane flights that are traversing our communities and others. And I believe a public airing of this would go a long way towards generating momentum to changing this unfair system that's been foisted upon us. Beyond that, I filed several earmarks to affect policy change on a statewide basis, which I believe, which will have a positive impact here in the town of Milton. First and foremost, I filed an amendment seeking two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a municipal grant program administered by the state fire marshal for advanced cancer screenings for our firefighters. It's come to light in the past twenty years, twenty to thirty years, and sadly so and tragically so, that our firefighters, who perform so heroically across the Commonwealth and here in the town of Milton, are incredibly susceptible to occupational cancer. It is a scourge of the fire service, and the percentages of firefighters who contract cancer and, in many cases sadly, succumb to cancer, are astronomical for the fire service. So this will create a grant program and fund a grant program so that cities and towns, towns such as Milton, can advance, administer pre-cancer screenings and try to detect, early detection, because we all know early detection is a key to overcoming this insidious disease for our firefighters. And obviously, treat our firefighters, get early detection, make a diagnosis, and treat our firefighters and protect them. And quite simply, we're trying, we are and I am trying to save lives here. Also, I filed an amendment seeking a hundred thousand dollars for additional programming at the On-Site Academy. The On-Site Academy is an institution in northern Western County. It's a converted farmhouse that treats firefighters, police officers, EMS, and correctional officers, that, quite simply, in the performance of their duties, see things that no human being should witness and suffer great mental health crises as a result of these horrific experiences that are a part, impartial sadly, of the various heroic professions that we benefit from here in the Commonwealth. That amendment was also successfully adopted. So with that, I thank you all very much for your time, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you, Senator. Are there questions for Senator Timmeltie for members of the board, please?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, Mr. Wells.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Senator. I just want to make reference to one that you mentioned that most people are completely unaware of, which deals with the mental health issues, which is the On-Site Facility at Western Mass. On-Site is probably in its tenth year now. It has been handling some really severe, as you mentioned, mental health issues for our first responders in the state. And most people would never even know it. We always talk about mental health being hidden on this to many as it began with, but thank you personally for funding that one aspect, because that is a very important thing, and sadly, it has been used by this community in the past. So thank you for that. I'm sure Dr. Hayden Duggan is very pleased with that. So thank you. Thank you for the report, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Chair, if I may follow up for a moment, please?
Yes, and then we'll go to Ms. Musto.
Thank you very much. I I should back up a moment. In my capacity as the Chair of Public Safety and Homeland Security, back in the fall, in September, I brought the entire committee, along with my co-chair, Representative Gonzalez from Springfield. We brought the entire committee to the On-Site Academy to see firsthand what the wonderful works that this academy does. And, by the way, it's a hundred percent confidential, as Chief Wells knows in his capacity as a police chief. It's a hundred percent confidential, and, quite simply, it saves lives. It saves lives. And Chief Scoble, the former Fire Chief of Westwood, is the liaison for the Fire Chiefs Association of Massachusetts to the legislature, and in conjunction with Chief Scoble, as a committee, we went up there. I wanted the members of the committee firsthand to see the great works that occur and the people, the instructors, the counselors, who help people become whole again in terms of their mental health. And it's obviously, it saves lives, quite simply. So it's very important to me. It's very important to my colleagues in the Senate and in the House as well, and we're going to make sure it's fully funded in the years to come.
Thank you, Senator. Ms. Musto.
Hi, I just wanted to thank Senator Timmeltie for obtaining the funds that he has, especially the funds for Route one thirty-eight and twenty-eight for the patrols. When I was running for office, I heard a lot specifically about those two roads, and there were a lot of tragedies, especially the one up on one thirty-eight. And so I commend you for obtaining money for that, for both of those roadways and for all the other funds that you obtained this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Musto. And I must say, I was remiss. We also, Chief King and I, worked with Mary Jane Walker from the Vocil Civic Association, and the Vocil Civic Association has done great work in many respects, in many aspects of our daily lives here in town, and Chief amongst them is protecting all of us, all residents and all citizens of the Commonwealth on this road. It's a very dangerous road. So thank you, Mrs. Musto.
Any other questions or comments for Senator Timmeltie? Senator, thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
And thank you for your work on behalf of the town of Milton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, very much. It's my privilege. And if I may add one other item, Mr. Chair.
Please.
One amendment that I neglected to mention earlier, which I am very pleased with, and something as a child I benefited from. I filed an amendment seeking a million dollars for the Trailside Museum. It's something that, as a child, I think everybody in, everybody on the screen has either been there as a child or brought their children or their nieces or their nephews to the trailside. And, you know, as a child, my mother brought myself and my sister Carrie Michelle there. My sister Michelle brought her three children, who are residents of the town up there, and I know each and every one of you has been there with your children or been taken there as a child. And it does wonderful work. It's not just an asset for Milton and Canton, and it's much more than a regional asset. It's an asset for the whole Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I believe in excess of two hundred schools brought field trips to the Trailside Museum prior to the pandemic in two thousand and nineteen, and we're looking for that to resume. It also conducts field trips to schools all around the Commonwealth and brings animal science and nature to life. We're exceptionally fortunate to have the Blue Hills Reservation right a big part of our community, and it's unique for the rest of North America, for a major metropolitan area to have a reservation this close and within a major metropolitan area is truly unique. And as we all know, here in this town, the Trailside serves as a visitor center and a gateway to the Blue Hills. So with a million dollars, I believe the Trailside Museum will be able to do a lot of catch-up in terms of restoration. After the stock market crashed in the fall of oh eight, their budgets were cut drastically, and they're still trying to climb back and become what the great vision we have for the Trailside Museum in conjunction with the Commonwealth and the Mass Audubon. So it's something I'm very pleased with, and I know children for decades to come will benefit from. So thank you.
Posted on progress. We have a grandson who would live there if he could.
I would highly recommend the Otter exhibit. It's fully restored, Arthur.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you. My privilege and my pleasure. I hope everybody has a great night. Thank you.
We have with us this evening the Chair of Milton's Planning Board, Meredith Hall. Meredith spoke with me about one item on our agenda, item number seven, that I believe she's going to address. And I should mention that when we were together for the M. Joseph Manning Annual Awards at Creighton Field approximately two weeks ago, I asked Meredith what her thinking might be regarding the possibility of planning board and the Select Board at some point in time sitting down together for a conjoint meeting to discuss items that might be in common, items that might not be in common. And she was very interested in doing so. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank her for that willingness, and some point in time, we'll put our heads together and see what we could come up with for a schedule and a mutual calendar. Meredith, the floor, show us, please.
Thank you. Good evening. It's really nice to see you all. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for inviting me to speak with you this evening. Last week, I, I learned that the discussion and approval, excuse me, for a request from the Master Plan Implementation Committee for ten thousand dollars as a, excuse my voice, as a matching grant by the planning board to further study East Milton Square was to be on your agenda for this evening. I wanted to let you know that although this was presented at our town, by our town planner in his update, the planning board has not had the opportunity to discuss the NPIC funds. It is to be scheduled on our June twenty-third planning board meeting. And as you are aware, there's been tremendous pressure on East Milton residents with not only the forty-B Falconi Falconi development, but a highly dense project at four forty granite, requiring residents to attend frequent and ongoing meetings, not to mention the impact and disruption of traffic and parking with the construction of the uncompleted overdeck. As we look towards the next steps in planning and carefully considering new zoning, it is critical that we are clear on specifically what a grant would be funding, and the residents and stakeholders have trust in their elected representatives on the proper steps to be taken. Therefore, I respectfully ask that, following your discussion this evening on the Master Plan Implementation Funding, that you postpone a vote until after the planning board has met and had a chance to discuss this issue. Thank you for your time this evening and for allowing me to speak with you on such an important issue.
Thank you, us all. Any questions, any member of the board? There are none, and noting that our clock is ticking fast, I'm going to invite Mr. Earl Fay. I'm sorry, Ms. Bradley. I see your hand raised.
Mr. Chair, just a point of order. No, sorry, not to cut you off, Aaron.
No, you're fine.
Are we in citizen speak?
Yeah.
We're in public comment, right? So most probably, we don't have a dialogue.
Yes.
And I thought having a fellow chair might be like with the state senate, an opportunity for a question or two, and that's Ms. Bradley.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I was going to say exactly what Mr. Wells just said, which is that during my understanding of public comment, we're not to comment.
Right. So we're now going to Mr. Fay. If Right. So we're now going to Mr. Fay, if he could be moved to us. Shaun. Mr. Fay, you're on mute. You're off mute. Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, and members of the board. I would like just to share a couple of comments. We had a Memorial Day celebration that the town holds every year. Fabulous weather, an opportunity for the very young and the not-so-very-young to gather as Americans and to celebrate who we are as a nation and to mourn our collective losses of those who lost their lives force of their duty. And many of us were very saddened, angered, outraged, disappointed by trustee member, Mr. Frizzetti of the cemetery, who chose to curse out the Commander-in-Chief essentially on that day at the end of his comments. And I understand that the trustees, or this might be a matter for them, but the select board is in many ways the face of Milton. And so I choose to bring this for consideration of the select board and consider some discussion perhaps in open agenda, item 18, or something of those lines. He's to be condemned, I think, as a representative of the town in many respects by what occurred. And it's worth noting that other communities around this nation have really become so much more divided in heated ways. And we ought not have that here in Milton. When representing our respective boards at public events or in a meeting such as this, can you imagine if folks chose to toss out various political statements, whatever they are, whether we agree with them or not? What chaos would the town be in should our members of various bodies choose to act in that way? And I have the utmost respect for everybody on this board and others, those who I voted for, those who I haven't, those who I agree with, and those who I don't, for their commitment to the town, or those who I voted for and might disappoint me in a vote, those who I agree with in the town. And how many of our folks who have lost their lives to do their duty were under a president they may not have voted for, that they may not have even potentially agreed with, but were doing their duty for you, for me, for Mr. Frizzetti, for all of us? And let's have some respect for the Commander-in-Chief and for all of us in the town of Milton on such a solemn day. With that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fay. The time for public comment has expired. I see no other hands, so we'll move to agenda item number four, which is the town meeting update. Just a couple of quick introductory comments. Reminder that town meeting will be held by Zoom on June 6, 7, 9, 13, and 14. We all want to pay attention to related communications that will be coming our way, particularly those from our town clerk. With that said, we'll turn to the discussion and potential vote, Article 34, Change of Use in Home Will Petition, Town-owned land at Gao Road and Blue Hill Parkway. Mr. Zulus, may I turn to you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Friday, the School Building Committee voted to recommend that this board refer Article 34 back for further study and include an updated article on the warrant for the next town meeting. The reason for the vote on Friday was some work that the committee, particularly the Chair, Mr. O'Rourke, rather, who's here, has done with the State Forester that has opened the possibility for an improved plan for all concerned, particularly the butter and particularly the conservation interests in the front of the property. Those changes would be outside of the scope of the current article. So the thought is to review those potential changes. And if they turn out to be doable, to revise and update the article for the next town meeting. So with that, I'll turn over to Mr. O'Rourke, who can go through the details of what that potential change is.
Excellent. Mr. Zulus, and welcome, Mr. O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. And good evening to the other members of the board. As Mrs. Zulus alluded to, you know, we've been working on this article currently. You know what I mean? We're looking at other ways of, for lack of a better word, doing it better. If I may, Mr. Chair, may I share my screen?
Certainly.
Thank you. So essentially, just some quick background, very brief. As everyone's aware, the property that we're looking at is parcel D656A along Gao Road. It's comprised of two separate portions of the parcel. The parcel south of Gao Road highlighted in yellow, and then the parcel north of it, which we've always referred to as the hockey stick. The yellow portion was originally what we were looking to acquire in the land swap. We did hire DRA Architecture to do some conceptual designs on that site that we've shared previously. On the site, we were constructing a singular middle school that housed two educational programs, a middle school program and also a preschool program. And it was a three-story structure. So as part of the land swap that we're looking at, as I mentioned, that yellow portion was kind of what we were looking to acquire as part of this land swap. And again, a few aerial images for it. Across the other side of Gao Road was a parcel, which is D656B, which is used for, it's deeded for active recreation. Originally, we looked at potentially trying to locate the school on there, but the buildable portion of the parcel was too small. Is some of you aware, there was a letter from the State Forester, Jim Rasmussen, that did a site walk with members of the town, Joe Mendunio and I believe Pete Jackson, at an earlier date. When I read through the letter, the highlighted portion here really stuck out to me. And essentially, what, you know, the State Forester was acknowledging that he thinks there may be a way on this site to work with it and preserve a majority of the ecological value of the site while still constructing a school. So that, you know, got me ears perked. And I reached out to him. His cell number is at the bottom of the letter. And he was happy to walk the site with me. So we walked it a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Mendunio and Mr. Jackson also joined, which was, you know, I welcomed them to join. So as we walked the site, the thing the State Forester tried to point out to me, you know, for me, when I look at the site, it's trees. I wouldn't understand the differences that were there. And that's why I needed someone, for lack of a better word, to hold my hand through it. And as we walked the site, what he was pointing out is the frontage portion of approximately 300 feet along Blue Hills Parkway is the majority of the ecological value of the site. So we looked at it and walked it. As we walked up further towards Brooks Field, it became less ecologically valuable. Still some value to it, but not as high as the stuff shown in green. So as we were looking at it, you know, my typical engineering mind kept wondering of, you know, what could we do if we were to kind of conserve that portion of the frontage? So when I, I was kind of doing this live while I was out there, but I'll walk you through the kind of graphics that was going through my head. You know, the site, citing the building on the parcel, utilized a lot of the parcel. The lower portion that we're talking about, that they mentioned was ecologically valuable, had a lot of the parking associated with it there. And then also showing yellowish on the side is a buffer zone for home ink. So as we're looking at it, and as I mentioned earlier, the parcel on the other side of the road, kind of shown in red, was what we figured was the buildable portion of that parcel, again, too small to cite a school on it on its own, mainly due to the wetland boundaries that we pulled off the civil engineering drawings back in 2000, when they constructed the road. So as I walked with the State Forester, you know, he looked at that parcel and looked at it as less valuable. Again, still some value to it, but not as valuable as what's shown in green. So one of the things I came up with as I was walking, standing there with them, is the idea of taking Gao Road and realigning it through that parcel, essentially keeping where it touches into Blue Hill Parkway exactly the same. And then realigning the road through the active recreation parcel. And what that does now is keeps the green portion of conservation land untouched. And it squeezes our parcel up, which is shown in purple, for conservation land. And then we're able to utilize that parcel that's across the street of Gao Road and merge it in with the other parcel to basically create a singular parcel that we could probably cite a school a little bit better on. It's more rectangular than a boomerang shape as it previously was. And a couple of things that come out of this that I liked and our committee liked is it gets the structure further away from home ink, so we can alleviate some of the concerns of the abutters. Also, it preserves that ecological value of the land conservation land down by Blue Hills Parkway. So right now, we've taken this. We think it's a better plan, as Mr. Zulus indicated, so it's out of the scope of the article. So we're looking to kind of study this further. The study's going to be a three-step process, from what I can tell. The first is we'll be hiring a survey company or a team to survey the wetland resource boundaries that we've conceptually shown here in blue from historical drawings. The second portion would be having them, once we know what those boundaries are, design of the road, again, conceptually shown in red. And then finally, once we know what the limits of those boundaries are, what we have for available parcels, reengage DRA architecture and develop a similar concept for a school on that site. And that's why we ask for it to get referred back. And that is the end of my presentation. Open up to any questions.
Questions? Yes, Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Shaun, Mr. O'Rourke, for your presentation. I know you've hard worked on this. Look, I want to ask you a question. This board received a letter from a resident two days ago relative to this project, asking that, are you familiar with, this is about five years in the workings now, of a project undertaken by the Park Department in collaboration with the Athletic Department of Schools to create a turf field at Lower Gile, beneath the baseball, the piattelli. Are you familiar with that project?
Yes, sir. I was on a call on it yesterday morning.
So we received a request to so give me a little bit of history. So my first time even hearing this was my first year on this board. Twice, the corner room was packed with parents, coaches, teachers, asking for this. And to be honest with you, I never thought it could happen. But for five years, the park commissioners, the park people, so many coaches and staff, athletic director have worked on this. A year ago, the Capitol Committee recommended to this board, which the in-town meeting, which was funded $100,000 to do the design and permitting this project. This town meeting Monday, in the capital proposal for this year, the number one capital request is that project. Today, I talked to a very frustrated park director who, you know, sees us about to become the light, is being told the same as us, that we think, they think we should not do that project now until you do your project. I just can't do that. These people, these coaches, and if there's one thing, and I've said it on this board many times, and my colleagues know, there's one thing we've learned about this town in COVID, is how precious our outside resources are. Every kid, person, resident that uses them. And this is something that so many work so hard on this. I just, for one, I don't know if this is something you supported, if this was brought to you before it came to us. I just hate to throw you under the bus here, but I feel very strong. I know how strongly you feel about that, but I know how strongly and how hard this has been worked on. And this is a very important project for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, too, had a conversation today with a parks director, mainly because of a warrant committee comment, but we also spoke about this article specifically. He informed me that not only did he have a productive conversation with the few folks from Prime Tree Brook neighborhood regarding this proposal, that they were also having one again on Monday. And so I'm encouraged by that, Mr. Wells, just so you know. I, too, stand right behind you, Mr. Wells, the fact that this is a field that is much needed. It is something that was the biggest concern I heard from parents when I was out and about in all of the precincts. We need more turf fields. We need more facilities that actually are suitable for our children to play on. The same way that I would be mortified if somebody came into our fire headquarters, I would be mortified watching people come to our fields, not only our soccer fields, but our softball fields as well. So this is all something that we need to work on. I have been informed, Mr. O'Rourke, and I cannot thank you and the School Building Committee enough, that this project will not, will not impede the proposal at Lower Gile. While some members of our community would like us to wait on the Lower Gile turf field, it's my understanding that this proposal will not harm that. It is something that is separate. And while we should look at all things as a comprehensive plan, this is something, as Mr. Wells has said, has been in the works for many years. I've been on the warrant committee for five years. It came in front of us at least five years ago, Mr. Wells. And this is not something that I'm willing to see stall in any way, shape, or form. So I applaud this new design and the wonderfulness that will lead to our neighbors at Home Ink. But I just want to echo that any impeding of us putting down a turf field at Lower Gile is not going to be anything that I support. It is a major piece for our community and for our children here. So thank you for this. And thank you, Mr. Wells, for what you said earlier.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. We have Mr. Zulus, followed by Shaun. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me state clearly that there is, there was, in the discussion of the School Building Committee, no linkage between the renovations, the turf field in the lower fields, and this new proposal. They are independent, except down the line, there may be the opportunity for some shared parking in that corner, which would be, which would be a huge benefit, as far as I understand. So in terms of the timing of the project, though, there was nothing in the School Building Committee discussion about this having any impact on the timing. I don't see it having any impact on the timing of the Lower Gile project. So, you know, all I can tell you from the School Building Committee and from my point of view, is no linkage between the two. Other than down the line, we may get some parking that would be a huge benefit down there.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Mr. O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just echoing what Mrs. Zulus said. So from, I sat on the meeting the other day with the designer of the field. The specific question I had was, is there any plans to do anything with parking or aligning the lower portion of Gao Road that leads down to that field? And none of it's in, the boundaries of that project is strictly just a turf field that The boundaries of that project is strictly just a turf field that they're replacing. The limits of work of that project don't extend anywhere near what we're doing. Ideally, I would hope the construction of our road and potentially parking lots could be an early phase of the school building project that we could do. That could turn over so we could utilize them as part of the parks early on while the school's being constructed.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Mr. Zulus, is there a motion to be made in this manner?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I will make a motion that's been recommended by the school building committee. And the motion is. That this board move to refer Article thirty four back for further study and to include an updated article on the warrant for the next town.
That's back to the select board for further study.
Technically back to the select board, and then, you know, the select board, I think, refers it to the school building committee.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Just a question, just a discussion, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is that a vote we're? Are we doing two votes tonight, Michael? Is that tonight?
No, just the vote is just, just that. That's the motion that was recommended by the school building committee. That's it.
Okay. I'm also Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Zulus, seconded by Mr. Wells. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Thank you for being with us, Mr. O'Rourke. My apologies for. My gravel voice tonight, allergies and I are not friends. And there have been plumes of pollen in the neighborhood.
It's very sonorous and distinguished.
We want more rain. Let's keep raining and get rid of it.
Item number five, briefing discussion. By Moses Director of Planning and Community Development on the Massachusetts Pay Transit Authority or M B T A redesigned bus network. Tim Zuzinski is with us. Tim?
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just quickly before I get started, he's probably long gone, but I just wanted to express publicly my appreciation for Senator Tilti's. All of those amendments sounded great, but especially the support for the animal shelter project. We've been working very hard on that, and we definitely appreciate his work and his work at the House on that one. So that was really great news. So the first thing I'm here to talk about tonight is just to give you a little bit of information on a project that. He has been working on for several years now, which is a really kind of, quite frankly, revolutionary. Overhaul of the bus network throughout the M B T A service area. This has been a project that they've been researching, conducting community outreach. Doing all sorts of analysis work on this for several years. And just a few weeks ago, they kind of launched their kind of proposed new bus network. The 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 theory behind it is really to. Increase service for the people that are most dependent on transit. Which sounds kind of self-evident for the transit authority for a major metropolitan area, but. You know, if you read through this plan, you'll see some of the changes that they make. And it really is kind of a real kind of significant overhaul. I'm speaking about the system-wide overhaul. The implications from Milton are are not as significant. It's a little bit of a mixed bag in terms of the changes that we've seen to the bus routes that run through Milton. And I'll get into that. Do I have the ability to share my screen? I'm going to try and do that. Just so I can show you the the maps that that the T has produced. So. I may have sent around a link to everyone. It's, there's a whole big interactive map, and then they have a series of. Of documents for each sort of town or set of towns that go like a little bit of a deeper dive into the network and what the proposals are. So the two, the two main bus routes that run through Town of Milton are the two forty. Which went from Ashmont Station up at the end of the red line. Down through Dorchester, through Milton, down Central Ave, Reesdale Road, down Route twenty eight. Onward into either Avon or Holbrook and Randolph. There are two kind of branches. Both of those branches run through Milton. I might have mentioned that's my bus in the winter time or when it's raining like today. That's the bus that I'll take. The other primary bus route is the the two fifteen that originates in Quincy Center. Goes down Adam Street through East Milton Square, up Granite Ave, and then onward through, again, to Ashmont. There are other buses, as you can see on this map. This is the existing bus network, the two forty five, which is a relatively low frequency. Which apparently was. Was kind of set aside during COVID. I guess there was driver shortages, and then it was a kind of a low frequency route that they. They just did away with for a few years. And then the seven sixteen route, which goes down one thirty eight into Canton. That is a what they call a flag route. It's, it's, it's not even a traditional M B T A bus. It's kind of like a van type bus. They contract out that service. Relatively low frequency, doesn't actually stop unless you're on the street kind of flagging it down. This is the the network as it exists today. I'll just give you a little bit of a look at the key here. The dark brown is, we use the term headways in transportation planning. Headway just means a bus is going to come every X minutes. So if you're running at ten minutes, ten-minute headways. You can expect a bus every ten minutes. Thirty-minute headways means you got to wait a half an hour for the bus, if you just, you know, if you just miss. So you can see here that the two forty runs at thirty-minute headways. And the two fifteen runs at sixty-minute headways. And then the rest, the seven sixteen and the two seventeen. Are less than hourly or only operate at the peak hour. So when I say that it's a mixed bag. What I mean is this is the the proposed changes to the bus network. The the actual physical routes in Capitol Milton change, still going down the same streets. There may be stop consolidation considered here, but it's not part of the proposal right now. But the main, most significant change is a kind of a flip-flop in frequency between the two forty and the two fifteen. So the bad news is there's a reduction in service for the two forty bus. And that's primarily because I mentioned that there are two branches. One goes to Avon, one goes to Holbrook and Randolph. That Holbrook and Randolph branch on the two forty is is being proposed to be eliminated. So that's, that's bad news for Randolph especially, and bad news for Milton. It effectively halves the service that we get on the two forty bus. Now, the only bus that that runs on the two forty route is the one that goes down to Avon. So you can see here, again, I'll scroll down to the key. It's, it's now a sort of a light brown route every sixty minutes or better. The, the, the thing that they're sort of pitching with this new, new plan is that. They really want to have consistent headways seven days a week during the day. That's kind of the, the real main gist of this redesign is making sure that service is consistent. You know, trying to improve frequency where there can, but making sure that it's reliable. So every sixty minutes or better during the day. Maybe some more buses during the peak hour in the morning and the late afternoon, but that's the reduction. Again, because that Randolph branch is being eliminated. The good news is that we're seeing a commensurate increase in service on the two fifteen bus, one that runs from Quincy Center. It's, it's, I think it's a reward for Quincy. Quincy's doing, I mean, if you've been over there, you know they're doing a ton of building. They're really depending on transit for a lot of the work that's going on in Quincy Center and North Quincy. And so they've seen, you know, a lot of people depending on transit in those areas. So. The two fifteen route is going for every sixty minutes or better, every thirty minutes or better. So that means. The, any given, any given time of day, you know, where you'd be taking the bus. You'll get a thirty-minute headway on the two fifteen, and then more service in the peak hour that you can depend on to get to work or commute to the city or whatever you're doing. The other change with the two fifteen is rather than terminating at Ashmont. It's actually now the route is changing. It's going to terminate at Fields Corner. Which will, you know, put you a little bit further up on the red line if you're taking that route into the city. Those are, those are really the main changes. I wanted to sort of, you know, give the select board that information. There's a, these are draft proposals right now. There's an open comment period. You know, it's, it's up to, it's up to the town to decide if we want to, you know, issue a comment period. I think the the two fifteen increase is is great. I think it bodes really well for future items in terms of work that we're trying to do in East Milton. The, the, the news on the two forty is disappointing. Again, it affects me personally, but don't worry, I'll, I'll get to work on time somehow. You know, we've done a little bit of research into ridership on those routes. You know, they're not going to eliminate a route that's. A high ridership route, so it is an indication that there aren't a lot of folks using that Randolph branch on the two forty. On that route, the most used station in Milton is actually Central Ave. So folks getting on at Central Ave, folks getting off at Central Ave. The bus is feeding the train and then sort of folks are moving on. But even then, you know, the most that we see at that station is. You know, and the way that they measure this is ons and offs. So there's X number of people getting on the bus, people getting off at different time periods. You know, we're not seeing more than five folks getting on or off the bus at Central Ave. Especially even, even in the peak hour. Most times where we're getting the most activity at those stations is actually early A M, midday, late evening. Which is interesting. I haven't had a chance to kind of think through the implications of that, but you're not seeing a ton of sort of peak hour commuting service at that station. And then, you know, at the two fifteen, again, not a ton of ridership in Milton, you know, compared to Quincy. One thing that you find when you look at these is it's kind of across the board, North Quincy, Quincy Center, Ashmont, Central Ave. These are where you're getting people coming, getting, getting on and off the buses, much less so at the stops, kind of sort of in the middle of those routes. So one thing that I want to do is kind of a follow-up is, is reach out to planners over at Randolph and Holbrook and kind of get their take. It's much more significant for them. They're, they're getting entirely new service on the two thirty eight bus. So, you know, getting into town from there is going to be a little bit more difficult for them. People do use these buses. The ridership is not zero. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a significant inconvenience, but for a kind of a small number of folks. I think it's worth it just to throw the tea a note that says, hey, you know, this is important. You know, it'd be great if we could maintain the same level of service. But, you know, also, it's, you know, the, the effects are, are not going to be wide-ranging just because of the, the ridership on the two forty. You know, focused on, on the few folks that do depend on it, you know. So it's. I, I, like I said, all in all, a kind of a mixed bag. I, I think the fact that, you know, the, the bus route that goes through our amenity-rich. Sort of downtown business district is, is actually overall kind of good news for Milton. So that's all I've got for now.
We have a couple of hands for you. Ms. Bradley, you're recognized, and followed by Mr. Zulus. And then Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say or ask Mr. to Mr. Suwinski. Is it possible that the folks that are riding the two forty at that time are students that are going to B C High from Randolph? Because I'm wondering about that timing, and they have to do athletics after school, and so that leads them to come home at a different time. And so I'm just wondering what the implications will be for Randolph, for those students that are going to B C High. That was it.
Yeah, I mean, so, so that's something, you know, again, the riders of Milton, you know, especially at those kind of. You know, mid-route kind of stations, very, very, very low. It would be really tough to suss out exactly who's getting on the bus of Milton. Your, your point about Randolph is, is probably, there's probably something to it, so I'll definitely look into that. You know, it's, it's, you know. It's a crappy situation for them. You know, they're going to have to figure out, you know, I haven't analyzed the implications for Randolph with the other changes. You know, it could be that, you know, the, the changes for them are, are a wash. But I, I did want to reach out to their planners just to kind of get a sense of kind of what the implications for them are going to be. And if it's something, if they have, you know, maybe they'll write something and we may want to just sort of throw our support behind it. You know, because again, you know, there's, there's not a ton of folks in Milton that use it, but, you know, the ones that do, you know, depend on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tim, do you know what the deadline is for the comment period?
I, I don't. It's kind of unclear on the T's website, but I know that they are doing. A significant amount of public outreach through the. Through July.
Okay.
So I, I, I think that there's time to sort of consider this and to get something kind of on the books. I mean, they've got another. You know, I think their final public hearing for the system-wide kind of, you know, conversations is defined on the eighth. So there's, there's a little bit of time to think about this and to pull something together.
So my, my suggestion is that we, we publicize the diminished service on the two forty. And solicit feedback from the residents, publicize it with an email blast and, and social media and on our website. Put something on there to point out the fact that the two forty is going to be diminished. And that we're seeking comments, comment from residents so that we can respond to the T on that.
I think that's a great idea. So I will. I'll get some text up together. I'll run it by Anne Marine. We'll get it up on the website and blast it out to social media.
Thank you both, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Tim. Just, just a quick question. Is, is Brockton and Taunton still mirroring that two forty route? Are they going to continue to do that? Do you know?
So you're talking about the twelve?
Yeah.
The, the Bat Bus?
Yeah, the Bat Bus.
I, I, I don't have any indication that they wouldn't. That's a different, they're, they're outside of the T, so that's the Brockton area transit. But I can, you know, again, I can reach out to folks down there and kind of just check on the status of that surface. It's a weird, you know, it, it's interesting. You know, whenever you bring up one of these sort of trip planning apps, they always recommend hopping on the twelve, but they, they won't let you on if you're not getting on in Brockton. And they won't let you on if you're not getting off in Brockton. It's kind of, which is fine. It's their bus, but also. I wonder, I wonder if there may be an opportunity to sort of get back off that.
I thought they stopped at Randolph. But at least that's, their former operations director who just retired, I knew very well. I, my memory of it. He said it always had one stop and it stopped at Randolph, but okay.
Yeah.
That's the pickup though, not to get on. I think you'd get off in there. I don't think you'd get on. They don't pick up.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, there's, yeah, that, 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 that's how it goes. I'll, I'll, I'll check on that. And like I said, I, I want to have a conversation with their planner down there. And just kind of see what their kind of situation is. But also, I think we should, we should definitely kind of solicit.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're very welcome. See, no more questions. And with you being with us, Mr. Zuwinski. Could we turn to item number six on the agenda, discussion approval. Grant application from Planning and Community Development to the Massachusetts Community One Stop for Growth Grant Program. For consultant services relative to the Massachusetts Pay Transit Authority zoning communities in a mixed-use overlay district for East Milton.
So, uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's, there may be a little bit of kind of mixing of conversation between this and the next item. But I'll try to keep them as discreet as possible. So the Community One Stop for Growth Grant Program is sort of a. A bundle of grant programs that were last year kind of consolidated into one simple application. By, by, by the Commonwealth. And so it's, you know, we're used to have to apply for half a dozen different grants over the course of the year. Now you just apply once with. Any number of projects, instead of them all at the same time. We, it's only a year old. We weren't successful in our application that we did last year, but they didn't have any good advice. Just, you know. It was a competitive grant and, you know, you lost, sorry. One of the things that the Commonwealth is trying to do this year is, given the, the impetus on one hundred and seventy-five of. The communities in the M B T A service area, they are very interested in providing funding for technical assistance for drafting zoning. To comply with the M B T A requirements. And so, given the timeline of when we are hoping to get. Final guidelines from D A C D about how we can comply with that zoning. We thought that this grant program. we thought that this grant program was, was a good fit. It's, you know, we'll, we'll send out the application on Friday. We'll get an award decision in September and then hopefully can hit the ground running with the procurement process for consultant services to assist us in community outreach, in providing multiple options for, for zoning, providing visualizations for, for that zoning, providing an analysis of the potential for inclusionary zoning to add some affordability component to whatever MBTA communities hoping we produce. And, and so we're hoping that, you know, because the Commonwealth is, is very, very forward about wanting to provide technical assistance municipalities that we can, we can get that through this grant program. You know, there are a number of other grant programs that are doing this. M H P has technical assistance available. M A P C is providing technical assistance. I just don't think we've been ready for that because we don't know what the final guidelines are going to be. We will know what the final guidelines are by the time this grant. As a department, we think it's really important to get help on this. I could probably write up some zoning myself, but it would be very good and wouldn't have the rigor and, and, and the kind of the, the technical savvy that, that we could get if we procure some consultant services. So that is one project for which we're applying to the one stop. The other one is kind of a, a little bit of a backup. The next item on the agenda is, is regarding another grant application that we submitted to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for their planning assistance grant, which was to, we, we can talk about it in a little more detail on the next agenda item. But to get the process moving on drafting mixed-use overlay zoning for East Milton. We're hoping to get an announcement on that grant within probably in July or early August. But we wanted to cover all our bases because we think it's an important project. And so we are applying to the one stop for that. So if we don't get the one, hopefully we'll get it through the other. If we do get it for the one, then we'll kind of withdraw that application. And so those are the two projects that we are, we are, we're applying for, for grant funding for. And what they asked for is basically an acknowledgement from the chief executive that there's municipal support for these projects. And so I think we provided you with the draft letter for that. And we would, um, we'd hope that you would approve that and, and authorize the town administrator to sign that tomorrow, hopefully. There's no, there's no matching funds involved here. When I ask for money, there's no requirement for you to authorize any expenditure on this. Really just support for the projects. So that's what we've got for that one.
Mr. Chair, you looking for a motion?
I think you're right. Mr. Chair, you're muted.
I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion. Oh, sorry. I'll wait. Go ahead. Sorry, Roxanne.
So I have a question for Tim. Have these both been vetted through the planning board yet? Because I, I know that Meredith Hall just came on and spoke to us, so I'm trying to understand if these have been vetted. It sounded like they were going to have a meeting for what she said in June, like the twenty-fifth or some date like that. And I'm wondering if, you know, if this has actually been really vetted through the planning board process. And if not, can we wait till they have their meeting to vet this a little bit so that we can, you know, get some more information and feedback?
The, the applications due on Friday. This hasn't, this hasn't been vetted through the planning board. I, I think that the, the thinking here is that, you know, the, the planning board is going to be very much involved in the process of drafting zoning regardless of where and when it is. You know, this is the type of thing that, you know, there's money available from the state and we need to be able to kind of move quickly on it. And so in terms of the actual sort of, you know, putting together the procurement documents, for instance, we'll have to do an R F P or an R F Q for consultant services. You know, the planning board would be, you know, intimately involved in, in, in that for, for either or both of those projects. But I, I think, you know, again, with the MBTA community zoning, you know, this is something that, you know, we've talked about on numerous occasions at the planning board. I think there's been kind of agreement that, you know, we, we do need, you know, professional services. I've, I've advocated that from the beginning. You know, on the East Milton, you know, portion of the project, again, we can talk about it a little bit more. I have some talking points for the next item.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, if I may, Mr. Suwinski, he responds to Ms. Busto's question that Ms. Hall was addressing item number seven.
Right. I thought we were, I thought he was talking about both of them together, though.
No, we, we would handling them discreetly.
Okay, so we're just solely talking about.
Just to help verify that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wells, were you ready to make a motion? Was that your intention or?
I, I was, but I see Mr. Zulus is here. Mr. Chair, so I'll wait.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, so I, that's my memory as well that Ms. Hall addressed item seven. The E M N A wanted us to take a pause on both. And, and I, my, my question on item six, Tim, is if, if we, we have a deadline for getting the application in, if we get the money, what's the timeframe or what's the deadline for using the money? In other words, once we get the money and can we take a pause if we decide to, if we get the money in terms of, in terms of the timing?
I, I'd have to, I'd, I'd have to double check on that. I know for the, the grant for item seven is, is a sort of a two-year fiscal year cycle. So, you know, the deadline for a deliverable on that one is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I, I have a feeling that the one stop is, is similar. Again, you know, just the, the, the timing of these things, you know, they know that they're making awards announcements in September and October and that, you know, many municipalities and the state as well operate on the thirtieth fiscal year. So my presumption would be that it's, it's sort of, it's a simpler two-year contract on that grant. I'd have to double check. But, but again, you know, it's, we could always not accept the money. I mean, that's something that, you know, is also, you know, I, I kind of, I, I, I take, I take very seriously the, uh, the idea of, of chasing down these state funds. The, the planning board budget is, is, is good. But, you know, what we're trying to do as a department is leverage state and federal money to, to kind of make those dollars go further. And so, you know, this is, it's the type of thing where you just sort of have to like jump on these cycles when they come out. So I, I, I think, you know, the, what I see is my kind of job is, is, you know, let's, let's, let's get the money. And then, you know, again, if, if we want to, you know, figure out what the process is going to be, want to design a procurement in a certain way, if we want to sort of instruct a consultant to do this, that, or the other thing. You know, we'll have time to do that and we'll have all of the sort of input from the electeds. And, and every one of these, you know, zoning processes, you know, a significant portion of them is for public outreach and input, both in kind of standalone meetings, other forms of outreach, and then again, through the sort of general kind of regularly scheduled planning board, select board process.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Ms. Busto, Mr. Wells, and Mr. Zulus.
Quick question. So the deadlines, are these hard deadlines? Are they rolling deadlines? And are we going with any other entities besides this one stop for, for the grants for these kind of things?
So, so the, the one, the one stop is, is a hard deadline. It's due on Friday. If, if it didn't, if it didn't go through, there are other, like I said, Mass Housing Partnership has a technical assistance program that I think is on more of a rolling basis. Metropolitan Area Planning Council may have funds available. There's other opportunities, but most of these are, are kind of hard deadlines. And, you know, what I, what I, what I try to work with is, is sort of the general priorities that I get from, not just our planning documents, but also discussions that we have at the planning board, you know, to kind of move on these things when they, when they come up.
Mr. Wells.
Thank, my, I want to put my hand down. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to be a little bit, there's a difference between what the planning board does, what we do, and for the record, Mr. Suwinski works for the town administrator. He is the op, he is the planning director, which is an operational position. Even though he does work intrinsically with the planning board, and I know Roxanne made reference to that. He works for the town administrator representing the town, and he is correct. These grants, you don't want to lose your place in the queue. You may not get funded this year, but next year you stand, as you know, Tim, you get a better chance. I don't want to miss our place in the queue. Given that, Mr. Chair, if it's all right with you, I am prepared to make a motion.
Okay, could you hold that for just a second?
All right, I will. Okay, I'll, I'll wait till Mr. Zulus.
Just, just very quickly, I was going to follow up on, 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 when I, the question I asked him before, and that is just, Tim, to put a point on it and, and just very quickly. Fair to say that if we got this money, we don't have to move forward on it until after the deck is finished in a few, four or five months or six months. We can, we can use it, basically, we'll have, we'll have an opportunity to use it on an ongoing basis. It's not like if we get it, we get it next month, we have to use it before the deck is finished, right?
I, I will, I will double check on that. Again, my, my instinct, given the timing of the grant award, is that there's a, there's a longer timeframe than just the eight months between October and, and June thirtieth. But I, I will, I will confirm that. And, and again, you know, we'll, 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 we'll figure it out. Because I did, and, and I'll address this at the next agenda item. I did also get the M N A letter. We can talk about that a little bit more, but, um, but, but yeah.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to move to approve the grant application for planning community development to Massachusetts Committee One Stop for Growth Grant Program for consultant services relative to the MBTA zoning communities in the mixed-use overlay district.
So Ross on the floor is a second.
I second, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bradley seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Busto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. We'll turn now to item seven on the agenda, discussion approval. Master Plan Implementation Committee's request to match ten thousand dollars in M P I C funds for a planning assistance grant to develop a mixed-use overlay district for East Milton from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Mr. Suwinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and again, just to sort of reiterate the chronology of, of these grant applications. This one has gone in. Master Plan Implementation Committee voted to approve a fiscal year twenty-three expenditure of ten thousand dollars in match funds. We're expecting an award announcement sometime in July, if not perhaps early August. And so the, as you're probably very well aware, if M P I C wants to spend money, there needs to be a vote of both the select board and the planning board, which is why you're here. I, I, I requested it to be on the agenda at, at a recent planning board meeting. Meredith Hall came in during citizen speak and kind of talked about her reasons for delaying that, which, which are fine. You know, it was a pretty full agenda last week, and, and if they want to have a, a lengthier discussion about this issue, they should absolutely make the time to do that. But, but just to lay a little bit of the groundwork for, for why now, why this grant, why this vote. We have been doing a number of planning activities in East Milton for several years now. I, I, I think kind of, you know, East Milton has always kind of loomed large in, in town affairs, planning and otherwise for, forever. But I think the most recent sort of set of, of activities are all connected, you know, kind of dating back to the original Falcone proposal. That, that is now the, the forty B, the resident city of East Milton. You know, a lot of neighborhood discussion around that project, a lot of back and forth with, with the property owner and, and, and the neighborhood. And what the planning board heard in that timeframe was, you got to do something. We, we need, we need planning. We need, we need something that's going to give us some, some predictable assurance that we are going to get projects that we feel are, are consistent and compatible with our neighborhood. You know, the thinking being at the time that that project was, was a little too much. The planning board heard that loud and clear. They initiated a process through the Urban Land Institute, which is a nationwide real estate development design sort of association. And what they do is they put together what are called technical assistance panels, where they gather experts in real estate and development and planning and design and kind of helicopter them into an area to kind of take a look around and, and kind of, you know, hear, hear what the issues are, hear what the goals are, and offer advice effectively. If you, if you've been around long enough, you remember that we did this in the Central Ave Business District. It led to the P U D zoning that gave us thirty-six Central and one thirty-one Elliott Street, which I think are both fantastic projects. So B U L I came in and did a technical assistance panel in twenty nineteen and offered a, a range of different kind of bits of advice about, you know, how we could maximize the potential from a, a sort of a development perspective, and also just the kind of a, a livability and a walkability and an economic development perspective. You know, and, and I, I won't go through all those recommendations, but that was sort of step one in the process of kind of figuring out what. The next step, which, which is, you know, the planning board's put significant budgetary resources behind, was bringing in the Barrett Planning Group to do what they refer to as sort of visioning exercises to sort of get folks in the neighborhood together and, and try to figure out a consensus vision for development at the built environment in East Milton. That started off as a, as a small core group, expanded to a little more than a dozen folks. I went to all of those meetings. They were very productive. I wouldn't say that, that, that group came to consensus in, in the way that we would like to see consensus, but I think a lot was learned during that process. And there was a lot of, you know, you know, overarching consensus, maybe not, but I think everyone agreed on a lot of really discrete elements of, of, of what we were talking about. And I think everyone agreed that, that some change in land use regulation was necessary. And so that, that Barrett Planning Report is, is available. It's on the planning department website. The, the sort of the, the, the implementation of that plan, the recommendation was, you've got to look at zoning in East Milton. That's what came out of the Barrett process. There was a, a number of other kind of regulatory firms that were proposed. But overall, a, a, a change in zoning was necessary if, if we were going to sort of achieve our, our planning and housing and transportation and economic development goals in East Milton. I'll, I'll give you a great example, and, and we, we can get into a little bit more of, of kind of some of the commentary that's been going on around, around this agenda item. Again, I, I received the, the East Milton Neighborhood Association letter, the same as everyone else. The last time that we've had a new building built in East Milton under the business district, district zoning was in two thousand and eight. Five oh-two Granite Ave, which is the, the Sleepy's Building, is the newest building in East Milton. That's fourteen years ago. Before that, forty-two Mechanic Street, the really small brick building that the Falcone Companies owns, nineteen ninety-nine was, was that building. And before that was four fifty Granite Ave with the, um, the nail salon, and there's a couple of this, yeah, nineteen eighty-nine. So in, in the past thirty-three years, we've had three new buildings built under the zoning in East Milton. I'll let everyone else determine whether that is a lot or a little. But I think, given the fact that there's been a, a lot of development interest in East Milton, and we are not seeing new buildings built under the zoning, leads me to believe, to agree with the, with the Barrett Report and the work of the East Milton Working Group, that we need to address zoning. The forty B project that came from the Falcone Project, four forty Granite Ave, these are projects that have generated a, a significant amount of discussion and debate in the neighborhood. These are a direct result of the fact that property owners can't build marketable, profitable projects under our existing zoning. And so what you see is projects like four forty Granite Ave, which requires zoning variance, or the residence city of East Milton, which require a comprehensive permit. You can't build something that makes return under our zoning, so you've got to see other methods. As long as we're not out from under forty B, forty B is always going to be something that developers and properties can lean back on. And it sets the land prices. Land prices are not determined by what our zoning says you can do. Land prices are set by what. And so until we get out from under forty B, the, the only other option we have is to provide a third option. a third option that is more attractive than a bruising comprehensive permit project, but rather is a predictable, community-led sort of land use regulation that, that will offer someone an opportunity to build an actual project. Again, I, I, I read the letter from the East Milton Neighborhood Association. I don't think that anything in that letter was out of line or wrong or, or not reasonable. I think there were a lot of, um, really valid points that they made. Extraordinarily sympathetic to the amount of activity going on in East Milton. I went to every Barrett Planning Group meeting. I've been to every East Milton, um, 40B hearing, um, plus all the other 40B hearings. I was at every 440 Granite Ave meeting. I know how many meetings that they've been having. It's a drag. Uh, it really truly is. What I would say to you is that delaying a conversation about new zoning is not going to stop property owners from wanting to redevelop their property. I don't know when the next project is going to come down, but, um, there's a lot of interest in Milton. There's a lot of interest in East Milton. And we can either have projects that respond to a community-led, community-driven land use regime, or we can get 40B projects or, or variance projects. So, I, I, I think it's important to, to keep the momentum going on this. Any pro, any conversation, any process that we have around developing new zoning is going to build off of those things that we've already done. So, there were a lot of meetings for the Barrett Group. There were a lot of meetings for the 40B where we've learned a lot about what people's preferences are for development. That all doesn't get wiped away. That informs the zoning process. We know what types of height are intolerable in East Milton. So, we're not going to bash our heads against the wall on things like that. You know, the, 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 the other couple of things, and, and again, I, I, I agree with the folks at the Paper Association wholeheartedly in terms of the importance urgency of addressing traffic and pedestrian safety, of addressing rationalizing the parking system down in East Milton, of addressing the loading zone. I have another grant application in. I actually double-checked on it earlier in the week to make sure it didn't. To people parking management plan. Um, that was a recommendation that came out of the local rapid recovery plan that we did in East Milton. If we don't get that grant, um, my recommendation of the planning board is going to be to, to use budget and fiscal to pay to do that. We want to, we want to address, you know, signage. We want to address wayfinding. We want to address enforcement. What is the best style of enforcement that we can, we can use to manage our parking? We want to talk about, you know, are, is an increase in supply necessary? We want to get, again, professional expertise on the best practices for parking management. So, that's in the works. Again, if, if you don't get the free money from MAPC, I want to use planning board budget, and that's going to be my recommendation, recommendation to them. Because I don't want to kind of put things off just because we're not getting, you know, grants. I think that's important, and it's a priority. And again, the planning board has expressed that their fiscal 23 priority is to expend budgetary resources on East Milton. Which is, which is why I felt confident in putting this grant application together, um, because the planning board has expressed to me that East Milton is, is important. You know, and, and the final thing is, you know, and, and this is something that I think is, is, you know, is, is in the select board's hands. We have a concept for a, a new loading zone on, on Franklin Street. It, it's going to require a little bit more analysis. Um, it's going to require, um, studying the concept of, of making Franklin Street one-way towards Bassett Street in order to accommodate it. That's something that, you know, we can pick up, uh, as a staff. We can pick that up as a traffic commission. It's, i- it's out there. A data group, uh, proposed this as part of a, a curb management, um, study that they did back in 2019. So, that's something that, you know, if that's going to, if that's a priority, um, we can hop on that. You know, you know, very, you know, very quickly, um, if, if that's something that, that's of, of interest to folks. So, I, that, that's kind of just where I stand. Uh, again, I know that there's been, um, a little bit of conversation about, you know, perhaps delaying this, or even not supporting the expenditure by MPIC. I'm not here to twist anybody's arm. Um, I'll, I'll go where I'm told, and I'll, I'll jump as high as you want. But I do think that, you know, given all of the work and all of the budget that we've expended in East Milton, I think it's, it makes a lot of sense to continue that process and to really engage with folks on, you know, the final step of implementation of all these ideas is putting into zoning, finding zoning that we can build consensus around it, and quite frankly, building zoning that's going to pass town meeting. You know, I'm, I'm not here to kind of, you know, force the, force a tower down anyone's throat. I really do want to come down and, and, and come up with something that people can find acceptable, be proud of, and, and be, you know, comfortable voting for. You know, we've had success in the past in our other business districts, and I think we can achieve that success in East Milton. So, that was a lot. I'm sorry for, for going on and on, but, um, just want to make sure you have all the sort of the background and, and all that. So, happy to take any questions up.
Thank you, Mr. Zowinski. Questions to members of the select board, please. Mr. Wells, Ms. Bradley following Mr. Wells. You're muted, Mr. Wells, and you're muted, Ms. Bradley.
Mr. Wells goes first, so I'm.
I think you had your hand up, I think you had your hand up before I did. Go ahead.
I, I thank you, thank you, Mr. Wells. I don't know that I did, but thank you so much for that. I will, um, lower my hand and appreciate that. So, um, Mr. Zowinski, I just want to say, as, as somebody who understands money left on the table, because a lot of towns and a lot of different committees do that, that you and your, the, the planning, the way that you are implementing our planning board is amazing to me. You go after every last cent that you can find, and it is inspiring. You, and there was a couple of other departments, um, in our town that do this, and I, um, was so impressed with it that I thought that we should have a grant manager become active, because there is money out there, and there's reasons why we are doing what, what we're doing, and that the state will help us to make a well-rounded, educated decision about what we should do with our town moving forward. I'm interested, and I don't know if, if, if Tim can answer this, but I'm interested to know, the only member of the planning board that is elected currently from East Milton is, uh, Mr. Rich Bowler. And, um, I don't know where he stands on this. I know Kathleen O'Donnell is also from East Milton, but she's no longer a member of the planning board. But I'm, I'm interested to know what the implications are if we don't pass this this evening? If we lose the money that's left on the table? And if, if, if so, that's a major issue for me, because any money, any penny left on the table is a problem for me. So, this postponing of it, it doesn't seem like it's a, a good thing for us to do. And, um, and secondly, if there's any input that you've heard from the planning board regarding the only member that lives in East Milton.
So, a, as, as, as Ms. Hall referenced earlier in her comments, um, the planning board hasn't had a chance to, to, to discuss this. It led specifically the, the approval of the expenditure by, by MPIC. You know, a, a, as I noted, you know, we had a conversation a few months ago about what the, the planning board's fiscal 23 budget priorities were going to be, as I was kind of helping them put together their budget. And they expressed that, um, that continuing and finishing the work that we've been doing in East Milton was a priority. This particular item has not been addressed by the planning board yet. They're going to talk about that at that meeting. Which I think is, is, is fine. Um, I, I, I can't speak for Rich. Uh, I don't know what his, what his thoughts are. I, I, I know that he is, is again, very keenly aware of, of all the issues in East Milton, um, and, and wants a solution for them more than anyone. But I, I, I hesitate to, to, to kind of speak for him. So, we'll, we'll see what that conversation turns out to be at the next planning board meeting. The implications for not voting tonight, um, I don't think it's, it's, I don't think it's a fatal issue. The application is already in. The, the, the actual committee that's going to be spending its budget has approved the expenditure. It's sort of a bank shot with MPIC, because it's got to also get, uh, select board and planning board. But for the purposes of submitting the application, we have what we need. So, that's in, um, what I would, what I would need is a decision, you know, before July, um, when they actually make the announcement. But I, I don't have to say to them, actually, we don't have our match. Sorry, guys. So, there's, there's a little bit of time to, to have these conversations, um, you know, so that's not, not a huge deal.
But i- if I can, in the follow-up to that question, um, if you need it by July, then today's vote is very important, because we've got a town meeting, we've got X, Y, and Z, and the planning board isn't planning on meeting again until July or June 23rd. So, tonight's vote is actually really important.
It, 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 it depends, it depends on the select board schedule. So, yes, so if, 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 if you, if you all are going to wait for input from the planning board on the 23rd, then it just, then it depends on when your next meeting is after that. You know, in terms of, I, I don't know, they, they, they never, they never put a, a, a hard date on when these award announcements are. So, you know, when they say July, I, I just start looking at the clock when, when the calendar turns to July 1. So, um, yeah.
Mr. Wells? Then Ms. Musto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as you know, Tim, this East Milton's a soft spot for me, so I, both from my 10 years as chair of the traffic commission and now living here, back living here. So, I agree with almost everything you said. The only thing that, that the EMDA reps who came, my neighbors who came to me today is that they support this, but their concern is that, given everything that they're attending now, from ZBA hearings to planning board to now some action they're taking post the ZBA vote, is that they just wouldn't have residents to be part of that conversation, as you knew as they were with the ULI, with Judy Barrett's committee. My thought, and, and this is only a suggestion. There are two committees and, that since I've been here, that have have really learned a lot from and have done yeoman's work. One is the NPIC, and the other is the Affordable Housing Trust. When we look at that PUD, that, and all the work that the NPIC did in Lowell Mills, just on the, the subcommittee that I chair, that would have never happened without the NPIC's work. We would have never got the dredging money. We would have never known, but even listening to us about their work. So, on the other hand, you are, as was suggested to me again, you're 100% correct on loading zone. It's a, it's a critical issue, uh, and all those things. I'm just hesitant to vote for something that one part, one very crucial part, which are the residents of the neighborhood, don't think they could be involved in right now. That's, that's one thing that bothers me. Because I don't like, like, Ms. Bradley says, I don't like leaving any dollars on the table either. My, so my one suggestion is, perhaps, take us in, in the planning board, or as perhaps maybe NPIC's next meeting, that you could invite the E-Board from EMDR and let them talk about this and figure out a way, and you could make your case, then listen to that. There's a great deal to be learned and ga- garnered from communication. That's just what I think is the symbol. Those are the two entities that I think need so much, yeah. I don't think it's so much us, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's, we, we're representative of the NPIC, as is the planning board. That's just my suggestion. I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for all your work. This, I, I know what, I know what you're trying to do.
Ms. Musto.
Um, hi. I guess what I would say is this, is that, you know, we want the interest of, of all the people that live down there, too. I think it's very important to have a public process. What we heard a lot of when we were running for office is transparency and inclusiveness. And I think that, um, from what you said, this is due in July, and if the planning board is going to meet in another two weeks, I think it's really important to get their input. I, I want to have it so that things are supported by not just our planning director, not just our select board, but that they're supported by the people that voted for us and the people that are in our community, because those are the people that are going to live with the changes. And that's really important to me, is that, um, the people of, in, in East Milton have a say in this a little bit. And if we can, you know, have a public process, form a public process between now and when this needs to be, uh, filed, of course, we want the money if we can get the money. I'm not saying that, and I think a lot of the people that I've heard, heard from on this issue are supportive of it in a lot of ways, but they want to be heard, and they want some part of the process. And I think if there's a way that we can do it, where we have them, you know, if they want to go to the planning board and we get the planning board to support it, then it just is better if we have everybody on the same page supporting it. Um, I think that's really important right now.
Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so I'm inclined to support this. However, we have had a request from Meredith Hall. It was unclear to me whether she was speaking in, in public comment as Meredith Hall or as Meredith Hall Chair of the Planning Board. As, as we know, chairs of committees, as you know, Mr. Chair, have no authority unless there's been a vote instructing them to do something by their board. So, it's unclear to me whether she was speaking as chair or speaking as, as, as Meredith Hall. Regardless, I think as a matter of courtesy, we, we have plenty of time between June 23rd and July 1st to have a meeting to support this, uh, or to vote on this and to, uh, to, um, to, uh, take, uh, what the, what the planning board has, has said. So, as I said, I'm inclined to support it, but I think as a matter of courtesy, we can probably meet after June 23rd and be, and before July 1st in order to accommodate the courtesy of the request, in order to accommodate, Tim.
Ms. Bradley, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say that I agree with member Vice Chair Zulus on the fact that we can wait. However, I would just like to say that the transparency and the peace of this should come from the members of East Milton. It should not come from those of us that live nowhere near East Milton. So, I'm really interested to know what the planning, uh, board member, Rich Bowler, and others from the East Milton Association, East Milton residents, including Mr. Wells. And think about this, this proposal. Um, it's not just something that impacts all of us. It's something that specifically impacts them. And so, for those of us that don't live anywhere near East Milton, I, I would just like to say that, that this is something that I am really interested to hear what, what they have to say. I, too, am inclined to vote in favor of this, just like Vice Chair Zulus. But, um, I understand that we do have a few weeks that we can play around with here to get more input. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Zowinski?
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to, to raise one, one, one final thing, just to kind of clarify, kind of like the timeline of, of what we'd be talking about here. So, um, whether, regardless of, of what we're talking about here, there's, there's at least a couple of weeks, if not a couple of months, between now and, and when an award decision is made. Another six weeks to two months for procurement. And then each of these grant applications are, they're, they're identical, have baked into them, and at least 14-month process that involves, you know, multiple community meetings, multiple opportunities for outreach through other means, whether social media, surveys, website, mail, whatever. So, you know, we're, we're not talking about kind of launching into East Milton in the summertime, you know, and trying to, you know, write some zoning. You know, these are, these are processes that are probably not going to begin in earnest until 2023, um, and are going to be, you know, at least a year long, if not more. You know, so, you know, just to sort of, again, situate people in kind of the timeline of what we're working, we're, we're working towards. Um, and, and then to a, a, address Ms. Musto's comments, which, again, you know, just like a planner, um, we want, we want, we want buy-in, we want, you know, the community input. We want, you know, people to have confidence and faith in this process. One thing that kind of we refer to in the industry is kind of planning fatigue. And, and I think the, the EMDA letter kind of speaks to that, where like, you know, look, guys, we're, we're dying here. You know, we're going to these CBA hearings, going to these planning board meetings, going to these East Milton work group meetings. So, you know, what we want to be very kind of careful of is, when, when we kind of initiate processes or make decisions, you know, let's, let's go to the people when, when it really matters on the nitty-gritty details of, of what's really important. Because I think, it, you know, my decision-making has been kind of guided by, again, broad conversations at the planning board. All of our planning efforts via the master plan, via the housing production plan, via the Barrett Report, everything that we've done has kind of led to, you know, the concept of let's do some, some zoning activities. I think that the timing that we're talking about here in terms of, you know, the planning board will have it on their agenda. They'll take public comment. Um, that'll be available to everyone. Um, I think that timeline kind of worked. What I would hesitate to do is kind of have a lot of process to lead up to more process. You know, and why, why I think that sort of just getting some zoning down on paper for people to sink their teeth into, I think people would actually appreciate that. Because at the end of the day, they can come back and say, this isn't for us, at which point, you know, there it is. But I think, you know, talking about the thing rather than doing the thing is kind of what leads to a lot of that kind of planning, kind of fatigue.
Mr. Wells. You're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This will be my final comment. And and Tim, Tim is correct. I mean, you got, you know, who knows how many meetings we've gone to in the past in East Milton over this, and I can't even count. But one point that I I say this to my neighbors, I do the time this is this is that we're probably, we could be as close as, say, 30 to 36 months away from declaring the firehouse in East Milton surplus and the new engine two being completed. And I would like to see this done before that, so that it's not jump all who's gonna, you know, so we have some vision and some structure as to what this might be, because this is something that is going to happen. It's very likely that Engine Two will be the second house built and that they will be moving to their new quarters and that will become an empty building right in the heart of East Milton. So that's my final comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Wells. Chair is going to recognize the Chair for just a moment. And I say that with respect to the MPIC in future meetings with them would be possibilities as suggested, but the MPIC did, I want to note, vote unanimously for this. And at least two, maybe a third member, depending upon how one defines East Milton, supported it. That said, I think there's a good deal of wisdom on the floor and the select board has, regardless of when, it's regularly meeting, regular meetings are scheduled, put on a calendar, a special meeting for a decision, which is something that we could do. So if we could get a sense of the board, we we have two options before us. One is to respect the request that has been made of us. And allow the planning board to have its day with this matter. And then take your select board vote following that. Or to have a motion and vote up or down tonight, what is before us. And I'd like to get a a sense of what it is that you would like to do in that regard. Being a fair to everybody involved and recognizing that. Tim, you mentioned July. What could you just run the calendar issue for me again? For all of us again.
It's 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 kind of a a hazy calendar from from Energy and Environmental Affairs. They they've said, you know, to to expect an awards announcement in July or perhaps early August. So it's a range.
So how about backing up the review process from our inside perspective? What would you think?
Wait, can you repeat that? I'm sorry. I missed.
They're going to make an award in July or early August, but they're going through the review process well in advance of that.
Yeah, that that review process is going on as we speak. Well, not as we speak, but it's it's going on currently.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask. I didn't have that information earlier about what you just said about the MI.
MPIC, Master Planner.
Thank you, that one, too. Can you can you tell me more about that vote and how they already voted to approve this?
The document that we have here before us was reviewed by the MPIC. Tim's Deputy Josh attended that meeting. It was a thorough discussion and then it was followed by a vote.
And it was you. It was voted in favor, correct?
And now because of the way in which the MPI is set up, MPIC, like its members have to be jointly appointed by the select board and the planning board, the allocation of its monies, and it doesn't have a large budget. If I remember correctly, it's about $30,000 in the MPIC budget. Is that correct, Tim? And this had come out of those monies. Monies could come from someplace else as well.
But Mr. Chair, if I'm if I'm understanding you correctly, this money comes out of a budget, and I'm really sorry, I'm new. The money. I'm really sorry. The money comes out of a budget that is already approved and those people, those people that are appointed or elected or however they're there have already said that, yes, this 10 grand is good to go.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And all those people are.
I'm ready to vote.
Planning board and the select board.
Wonderful, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for that.
Ms. Musto, they're recognized.
Okay, um, so what I wanted to say was, uh, Tim, I know that when we were talking about this, you had also said that that they could meet the planning board and then that we could, they could have a vote. We could have a vote shortly thereafter and this could all be taken care of. My concern is this. We got in, we've gotten a letter from the East Milton Neighborhood Association. Those are people that live in East Milton. And I think clearly, as a sign of respect, we also have a planning board. Now, I totally respect the MI MPIC, but we also do have to respect another board when a board comes in here and asks, you know, for the opportunity to discuss this, a board member. I think that if we have the opportunity to, you know, listen to the East Milton Neighborhood Association, they have the opportunity to go to the planning board. I don't see the harm in it. And I think that it's sort of short sighted to do this without getting the input from the planning board in the neighborhood. Just to Erin's point earlier, she was talking about, you know, the neighbors and so forth. And people that live in East Milton is being affected. I think that's important. We're talking about another two or three weeks. I don't see the harm in that. And I think that would be, you know, the right thing to do.
I've been sitting here with my calendar, looking at whether we want to schedule this for June 24th, June 27th, and that's part of my reason for Tim asking the question to him, if it is the your will as the collective board to hold us in abeyance until such time as the planning board has had an opportunity to to entertain it, as was requested of us earlier tonight by its chair. Mr. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one quick word, and 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 I agree with Roxanne. And and I think we can, I think we can extend the courtesy to the planning board mem- planning board member who may have been acting as the chair or may have been acting as as an individual. But regardless, I think we can extend that courtesy. I think we have the time. But from my perspective, this this should in no way diminish our respect for the efforts of Mr. Zawinski, who's been working on these things and working hard on these things. And our support for him in 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 seeking out these grants and making these applications. The planning director is working really hard and deserves our support and and but at the same time, if we can extend some courtesy for a couple of weeks, I think it's fair to do that.
I'm sensing a consensus to that effect. Is there agreement?
Mr. Chair. Yes. Chair, I'm I'm going to make a motion that we defer this to our June. Whatever meeting you pick.
Do a date to be named, yeah. The June date to be determined. How's that?
And and above and beyond and outside of the motion, I I asked him once again, I do think it could be very productive. I'm not sure where Rich is. I have a gut feeling where I think he is on this, but I think it would be maybe productive to let set aside meeting just with MNA and the MPIC. I think that could be, I think if a lot could be gained out of this, so. That's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Ms. Musto, a seconded? No further comment seen. Roll call, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. So we will work with you. Anne Marie and I will be sure to work up a date with Tim immediately following, so that there's enough time for us to have it to digest the information from the planning board meeting before we have our vote.
Yeah, and and just before I go, thanks, thanks for the robust discussion. I I I love your engagement on these issues and and I really do appreciate your support. I I know that you guys have my back on on all this stuff, which is really great. It really gives me a lot of confidence, you know, in 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 my ability to go out and the job. So thanks for everything. Sorry it took so long. I know you guys have a full agenda, so I'm going to get out of here and and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Well, thank you for your good work on behalf of the town of Milton. Ms. Bradley, your hands are still up? Did you seek to be recognized?
It is. It is. I I would love to, just for one second, be recognized because Mr. Zawinski was a wonderful person today and sent me an email asking how he could be an ally throughout the year. And I just before this call and before this board was left, I wanted to say to you, Tim, thank you. Thank you for recognizing that and you and I will talk later on.
Yeah, no, very much looking forward to it.
I just wanted you to know that you're you're the only one. So thank you.
There there's time for everyone else to chime in. Don't worry. But yeah, we'll definitely talk soon. Thank you, everybody. Have a good one.
Thank you. Good night, now.
Good night.
We have three items before us that will have Mr. Chase Berkeley, the Director of the Department of Public Works, joining us. I have number eight, a discussion approval contract between Travata Sustainable Solutions LLC and the Town of Milton Mass Recycling Services. Welcome, Chase, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The meeting.
And members, yeah, so this contract is basically a status quo extension of our solid waste disposal. So this is the trash that is picked up by the hauler Sunrise Scavenger. Just to refresh your memory, we renewed their contract back in February for an additional five years. So the the trash that they pick up is transported to the Covanta facility in Braintree. And this agreement extends the current agreement for three more years with two notable changes. One, naturally, you've probably recognized the prices going up a little bit, given the the market conditions. So we, the past three years, we've seen a 3% annual increase and they've quoted us a 5% starting in FY '23. And the second change from the agreement is we've negotiated the ability to remove ourselves early from the agreement, which was not in place before, should we be able to secure a better deal somewhere else. But we're very happy with Covanta. We've been a very great partner and taking our waste over the past several years. So happy to continue that relationship.
And you're satisfied?
Yeah, so this this agreement, so I should have mentioned, has been reviewed by Town Council and Covanta Council. They've come to agreement on all the terms and we are satisfied. The tricky part in this business is the further you drive that trash away to get a better price, the more the hauler that picks it up has to spend to get it there. And so it becomes a geographic problem that there are just not a lot of regional facilities to bring solid waste to. So we're we're kind of bound by where we are and and what available facilities are out there right now. But should the market change in the next year or a new facility open, we have the ability to explore that option.
Thank you for that elaboration. Are there any questions, or Mr. Berkeley? Seeing none, we have a motion before us.
Mr. Chair, I'm willing to make a motion to approve the contract between Covanta Sustainable Solutions LLC and the Town of Milton Mass Recycling Services.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. The second place.
I'll second and and add my congratulations to to Chase or whomever negotiated this, forgetting the out clause. That's an outstanding outstanding ad.
Great. And thank you for that second and for the discussion. Seeing none, the roll call, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes, but I also see.
Anne Marie.
Yep.
Oh, Anne Marie's hands up. Uh-oh.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a friendly amendment to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract?
I gladly accept that, Mr. Chair. Absolutely.
Yeah.
The, uh, Mr. Wells, you accepted that?
I did.
Is the second you accepted?
Accepted, yes.
Okay, we'll continue with the roll. We'll return to the beginning of the roll since it's been amended. And thank you, Anne Marie. We always should have that boilerplate clause in there. It's easier to have it and then take it out than it is to keep thinking of putting it in. Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. And now we move on to discussion approval, concept images for the pergola in the new park on the East Milton Square deck. I didn't know if, uh, Mr. Wells, you wanted us.
I don't have to speak. You know where I've been on this, Mr. Chair. I've been, as Chase knows, I've been relentless on chasing this for seems like my whole life now, but we're almost there. Chase, I'll let you kind of update where we're at.
And as you know, that's a little bit of tongue in cheek in my part.
Yeah, so thank you. So we also have joining us tonight, Richard and Joe from the firm Ty and Bond Havelson, who are the landscape architects that designed the park that's under construction right now. So through an earmark secured by our state elected officials, we were able to get them going on the pergola design so that it can be dovetailed into the the park construction and be ready when when all said and done. So they're here tonight just to go over the design concepts and and the thinking behind the two images that we've shared with you for consideration. These is a bit time sensitive because construction's underway and the the foundations and footings need to be incorporated into the active work that's going on right now.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Um, thank you, Chase.
I never thought I never thought you were coming back. I was starting to think that way. No, no disrespect. I thought you were never coming back.
Well, I appreciate that some of the faces here are familiar from the design process that we went through with the Mass DOT when we were presenting design concepts for the park. And within the design concept for the park space, there was a a vision for having a pergola structure or some sort of overhead gathering space within the park, which is identified in blue, highlighted in blue. And we've been working with Chase over the past couple of months to develop a design concept for what that piece of the park could be. So, um, as as everyone is likely familiar with, this site is over a bridge deck that spans over Interstate 93. And it's the the site itself is about 300 feet long and the piece that would like to speak to tonight is on the southern end of the park space adjacent to the lawn area. Joe, I'd like to introduce you to the to the group here. Joe and I are both landscape architects with Havelson Ty and Bond Studio. And we've been working internally also with our structural engineering team to develop two concepts that we'd like to share with you today. Also.
Thanks. Thanks, Rich, and thanks to the select board for having us here to to present the two concepts that we've come up with. And we'll start quickly, just to to refresh everybody of the location we're looking at. So the pergola is at the south end of of the the lawn at the Manning Park. It overlooks the lawn and crosses Granite Ave into these beautiful buildings. And East Milton Square to the south is a nice buffer planting. And to the east is another buffer planting to help mitigate any any sort of visual impacts from Bryant Ave and Boulevard Street. That's Boulevard Street. And to help kind of get an under understanding of of where these these two concepts came from, you know, as designers, whenever we go to a site, we always look for inspiration either within the context to to either tell a story or or to sort of inform, you know, shapes and and basic proportions. And so when we were on the site looking out from where the pergola is going to be and where it's facing, we were we were struck with essentially the 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 buildings within East Milton Square and in particular, sort of the the dental molding along all the buildings, the curvilinear facades of of some of the buildings down there. And, you know, the one story really kind of rectilinear roof lines of the shops and restaurants. And also how some of that that rectilinear roof line or that really straight roof line kind of popped up in in some locations for signboards. And and not that we're expecting, you know, people to make this direct connection. You know, we're showing this just so you understand that the two concepts did come you know, from from the context from East Milton Square. And so the the hope tonight is for, you know, once we show these two concepts, is to get a direction and hopefully have have some. Uh, and hopefully, um, have, have, uh, some, uh, sign up on, on one of these concepts, one of these two concepts, uh, to move forward and develop further. Uh, and so the concept on the, the right, concept one, sorry, the left, um, is curvilinear in form, uh, has sort of more of a fan shape, uh, to the structure above. Um, and the concept two on the right is a little more rectilinear, uh, a little more segmented, uh, canopy in terms of its, of its basic, uh, components up there. But they're both the same, uh, in terms of, you know, the fact that they both have canopies that are about, uh, you know, eleven, twelve feet, uh, high. Uh, the, each canopy is roughly, uh, twenty feet by thirty-two feet. Uh, both of them have what we're calling is, uh, sort of a structural seat elements that define that back, uh, edge or the little sort of seat niche, uh, back there. Um, you know, uh, metal components for structures or the slender columns, uh, and, and wood, uh, and metal for the canopy pieces of both of them. Um, this first view, uh, is a bird's eye. And, and what we're trying to show with it is, um, is the context around it and how, you know, the scale of the height, um, you know, is, is, is really comfortable, not only in relation to the, to the lawn, uh, in front and that new Manning Park there, but also the, the other buildings around it. Um, and it also shows here, um, you know, that, that buffer planting to the south of it and to the, to the west of it, to, to help somewhat kind of mitigate the impacts of, of the expressway, uh, and the roadways around it. And that's also going to help sort of, sort of keep that, that focus out across the lawn and to the buildings, um, across, uh, Granite Street there. And this is, oh, sorry, this is a view, uh, more at eye level, kind of looking in. Uh, and you can see more of the, of that bench seat element. And, and also you can start to see sort of this, which, which behind and what we're attaching the bench to is this kind of really, uh, kind of large, uh, concrete form. And since the pergola structure can't be attached to the, to the top of the tunnel, uh, our structural engineers, uh, you know, concerned with it, you know, with wind loads and, and blowing away. So to alleviate that, um, you know, we, we have to incorporate a pretty sizable and beefy, uh, concrete footing that, that is below, uh, the surface, but then also needs to come up above. And so what we're doing is we're taking advantage of that, um, and we're shaping it into that seat, uh, that we're seeing here, uh, to give it mass, to help hold this thing down so it doesn't, doesn't blow away and end up on the expressway. Let's see, what else we want to see? Oh, and then here, uh, too, with this canopy, um, you know, looking up at it from here, you know, to, to sort of accentuate the, the curvilinear form. So we have in this concept, one, you know, these rounded edges and that sort of fan shape, um, of that canopy there. Um, you know, we've got this sort of metal, just, just detail underneath there to help kind of accentuate, accentuate that and, and reinforce it. Uh, now we're sitting within that, that seat node or that niche underneath the pergola. And you can kind of look up and, and see that, um, then this concept here, these slats of that canopy, um, they're about two inch by two inch wood. Um, and, you know, they're spaced just, you know, just comfortably enough to give some sense of a, of a ceiling above you. Um, but it's tall enough and the front of it is open enough. So, so even though you're sort of set back a little bit, you do feel like you're, uh, out there and connected to the, to the space and East Milton Square. Um, you know, so we're trying to create a nice, a nice little note for you to, to, to go to with coffee or meet a friend, uh, hang out, watch your kids. Um, some basic elements here, uh, what we're looking at, uh, is trying to keep these, uh, you know, from a structural perspective, from the metal pieces of it. Um, you can see these metal supports. They're circular in concept one. You know, we're going to try to keep them as, as thin and narrow as possible. Uh, hopefully keep them, keep four of them or be able to have just four of them. Uh, they'll attach directly to, uh, our concrete foundation. Uh, and you can also see here, you know, we're, we're sort of pulling that, that bench element back a little bit from the walk, um, so that we're there, if you're sitting there, uh, along that edge, you still feel comfortable if there's activity happening out there. Um, and you can also see here some of that inspiration of the, the dental work, um, from the buildings and, uh, across Granite Street and down, um, Adam Street. Go on to concept two, uh, again, looking at it in terms of scale, how it sits in that space, how the, the planting on two sides really buffer it, um, and how on the front side it really opens up to the, to the lawn. Now we're standing, looking up at it, and you can see a little, the difference, start to see the difference here in terms of the, the shape from, uh, previous concept. Uh, you know, these are, these are more metal boxes that undulate and string together to form that canopy. And then within these metal boxes, uh, we've got, uh, wood, wood louvers or slats. Um, and then with this concept here, because of the, the, the nature of the structure above, you know, one of these, uh, supports needs to kind of hang off and, and go into the planting. It can't sit necessarily on the wall. But we think that's kind of nice. It sort of, it sort of expands it out a little bit, uh, gives a little more breathing room to the structure. Uh, we're sitting inside, uh, in that niche again. Uh, another difference with this concept, with the rectilinear concept two, is that, uh, previously this, this seat, structural seat or sculptural seat element was, um, curved at the corners. And this one here, uh, it's more of an angled corner. Um, you can look up and see, um, how these slats, these slats are, you know, same width as the previous concept, uh, but they're a little, little deeper, six inches. Uh, but you can see that the pattern is a lot different. And that's something we can develop more. Um, another thing, both with previous concept and this concept is, is in that canopy. You know, we can incorporate lighting, uh, if needed. And here, again, uh, showing the elements, same basic elements in terms of, you know, trying to keep, uh, our columns nice and slender. These would probably be, uh, two angles, um, that would make up each column. Uh, and it would attach to the top of that, that concrete structure to help give it weight, hold it down. And you can start to see here these, these boxes of this canopy here. Uh, there are two lengths and we're trying to play with those, with that rhythm and that pattern. Um, you know, looking at the buildings and seeing how that, you know, that the buildings along Adam Street, how it's some, some cases, uh, it sort of popped up and, and a lot for signage. You know, we're sort of using that here for inspiration. Um, and I'll end with some concept images. Uh, this is a pergola on the lower left and on the right here that we did, an Atlantic Wharf. And I think it gives a, sort of a nice idea of, of, you know, the general concept of, of keeping supports nice, uh, slender and light and airy, uh, and also gives a nice idea of what that, that upper canopy can be. So this is a, a wood, uh, infill or wood slats, uh, with a metal frame, um, supporting that and those. Um, and then also on this upper left, some images of what that seat element, um, can start to, to look like. Um, and that's what we have for slides and I will turn it back to the board.
Thanks, Joe. Um, so, um, in closing, this, this, uh, this piece, um, is intended to be interesting. If there's, um, to look at, if there's, uh, just on an everyday basis, or if there was, uh, if it was to be programmed in the future by the town, there would be opportunity to, um, have public speaking events or, um, you know, small, small, uh, events, uh, within the space. So provides a lot of flexibility. Chase, is there anything else that you'd like us to touch on now, or should we go to questions?
I'm, I'm good on my end. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Questions, I remember this is the board, please. Mr. Wells.
Get your pens out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you both for that. I've, I've already bent over, view the structure you just detailed there. Familiar with the work you did in Boston. You've done some very nice work. So, Chase, just, this will have, is, you know, Chase and the board members know, the Milton Arts Center is one of the director butters to this. They're very excited about this because they'd like to have some outside concerts, some of, move some of their summer things, which is really hot in their building. Out, out onto the terr- out onto the, I call it the terrace, but it's not a terrace in the summer. Um, so we'll have power there. We'll have all that, you know, we'll have all that lined in in the, in the preliminary work, Chase. Like we'll make sure we have electricity and all the things that we would need to host events as many of the residents and neighbors. Chamber as well is very excited. I've already showed this to them. They're very excited about it. Um, just my thought, my just that. We'll have those things there.
Yeah, so the, there's actually a power pedestal that's part of the Mass Dot project, already worked into that right behind this area. And then we're talking to them about, uh, running, you know, necessary conduit into this part in anticipation of this structure going in.
Do you need us to pick a, that you need us to pick a design tonight, or?
It would be helpful if we could get a consensus, and I'm a Crayola eight guy. This is purely an aesthetic decision. From a functional standpoint, an operational standpoint on our side, it, it really doesn't make a difference. It's just more of a style choice than anything.
Okay, we'll be following up with Ms. Musto, Ms. Bradley and Mr. Zulus in that order, please.
Okay, um, I just had a couple of questions about the materials. So my question is with the materials, um, what is the maintenance of the materials that are used here? Um, because oftentimes that becomes a, a problem going forward, right? So I'm sort of curious about that. Um, and so, uh, the, the actual pergola itself, does it have a little bit? It looks like it has a little bit of a pitch because I'm wondering about snow loads, uh, with snow in, in the slats in terms of the wooden slats with the snow load on it. Thank you.
I could, Rich, I'll, I'll speak to the, to the snow loads and the pitch, uh, and then you can talk about materiality. So, so there is no pitch to, to these. These are flat. Uh, and I can see, I can see why you would think about it. The intent is for this to be flat. Uh, and in terms of snow load, uh, it wouldn't be significant, given the, you know, that there's, there's gaps between the slats. But also, uh, it is something that, uh, structural, structural engineers consider, uh, when they're doing all their calculations and, and trying to, to figure out, um, you know, how big all these, um, you know, the, the metal part of the structure needs to be.
And, and, and in terms of maintenance and materiality, um, we would envision the, the metal components to likely be powder coated metal. So if they were, um, to be, uh, finished in black, that could be something that would, you know, potentially be, um, a more readily available, um, paint for touch-up over time. Uh, but it, uh, we could look at also more, um, you know, different, uh, other colors as well as, um, in, in these renderings, more of a gray color. So, you know, we could work with the town to, um, have touch-up paint, uh, in, in an event of either vandalism or damage. Uh, but we wouldn't anticipate, um, a high amount of maintenance with the metal material. And as far as wood materiality, uh, would be envisioning a dense, um, low maintenance wood that would not be required to be, um, stained. It could, it could gray out to, um, you know, to a natural gray finish and still look beautiful. And, um, if there was damage, that could be either sanded out or, um, you know, it's, it's a very low maintenance material that would be typical of, uh, you know, durable, um, urban conditions such as, uh, wood benches that are in other areas and, um, in Milton other communities.
Could I just ask a quick follow-up, or do you want to come back to me?
Uh, go ahead for the, your follow-up, please.
In terms of two questions quickly, what about a pow- uh, like a power, uh, like some kind of coating that would prevent it from pitting from the metal? Is that ever a consideration with the metal part? And the second part would be, um, which concept do you feel would fit out of the two a little bit better with the area? In your opinion?
Um, in terms of the first question related to pitting, I'm, I'm not aware of, of powder coated steel to be subject to pitting concerns. Joe, are you, do you have any experience with?
No, no, and it, and it, you know, and, and it all comes down to, to the quality of, of the finish. And, you know, we'll make sure that the quality is, is pretty high. Um, you saw the Atlantic Wharf, uh, image at, at the end, and that's, that's right on the water. Um, so that takes a lot, that takes a, a beating, both obviously from, from users, um, because it's, you know, it's right on the harbor wall. Um, and also environmental, uh, abuse there. And, and that's held up, you know, fairly well. So I don't, I don't think that's much of a, of a concern. And the other question about preferred one, you know, I think, I think, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't show something that, that we wouldn't want to have out there. We think they're both, um, I think they're both good concepts. I, you know, I don't, I think, I think maybe the option one, um, if I were to suggest one to lean towards, I don't know, uh, Rich?
I, I agree with your sentiment that, um, I think that they're both very solid options that would be very fitting for the context. And, uh, I think option, the, the concept number one would be, you know, really, a, a really nice, interesting, uh, design to, to go with. But, uh, again, either, either, either concept, um, could work really well.
Thank you.
If you, if you wanted, uh, go ahead, Sam?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
That's good. Erin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm, of course, the oddball and I love concept two more. Um, but hey, I'm the oddball. Um, I have a different question about all of this. I, um, I've never spent much time in that section of our town. And I'm going to tell you why. It seems very dirty and dust ridden and loud. And when I was there and I held signs for my election, it was dirty and dusty and loud. So I just want to ask, I, because I do believe that this can be a positive place for our town. And I do believe that this can be a place where folks go to listen to music and we have all these wonderful accoutrements. What is there besides the trees that is going to block the sound? Because I look at the Mass Pike and I see not just the Mass Pike, any major highway. And they've got the, the barriers on either side. What are we doing to ensure that whatever design we pick is actually going to be one that is acceptable for residents to come out and visit and spend time in? Because I spent, I don't know, ninety minutes standing there and it was horrifically loud. Um, so, eh, I'm not against either of them. I mean, my favorite is number two. I'll vote for number one if you make me. But, um, but I'm just curious if there's anything out there to help combat some of the noise pollution that's there.
Well, um, we, we did not design or have a, you know, a sound attenuation or a, um, a, um, a sound engineer develop anything within the, the Mass Dot park design um, to deal with the traffic noise, although we did, um, look to strike a balance with the proportions of the park to try to provide a, a, a larger buffer along that south end of this, uh, end of the site to try to give the, the feeling of separation from, uh, some of the traffic. So in terms of, in terms of noise, we, uh, there, the plant material only provides a very limited, the solution there, but, um, there were cer- there are certain aspects of the site that there's certainly, uh, a, a, a challenge just based on the context. And we look to try to provide a layout that, um, mitigates to the best of our abilities based on the materiality that we were able to integrate into the park design.
Mrs. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three quick questions and I'll, I'll give you the three questions and then I'll go, go back to mute. Number one, have you considered planting buffers on the Granite, Granite Ave side of the, uh, of the structure? Uh, number two, um, the seats in concept one appear a lot more comfortable to me because the seats of, and I'm sorry, the seats in concept one appear a lot more comfortable to me because the seats in concept two have that kind of sloping back thing. So can you confirm that the seats in concept one are much more comfortable than the seats in concept two? And then, um, and then, and then number three, uh, was there considered? And then, um, and then, and then number three, uh, was there consideration given to a solid canopy as opposed to the slats?
Well, I can speak to the, um, to the planting along Granite Ave, and we're very limited along the Granite Ave edge of the site, um, due to the, um, the height between the bridge deck and the, uh, the finished grade of the planting beds, so we weren't able to, uh, have enough soil depth to put significant plant material on that edge of the site, we're limited to shrubs. Um, in terms of the, um, canap- canopy being solid or, um, uh, or slatted, I'll, I'll, Joe, if you could speak to that, as well as the angle of the seats, um, that would be great.
So the profiles of, of the seat, um, they're, they're the same, the only difference between the two seats, so, so you know, the, the depth of the actual seat and the angle of the back, and the height of the back are, are the same, the only difference, uh, is, is at the corner, uh, where one is, is, is rounded, um, and the other, you know, they're at an angle. Um, so they're, they're both equally as comfortable, or they should be. Uh, in terms of the solid canopy, the first thing that comes to mind is, 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 and relates to an earlier question in terms of, of snow, um, and, and I, and, and wind loads, uh, in addition to that, uh, and I think it becomes something else from a structural perspective, when it becomes solid. From, uh, a design perspective, uh, because we're outside, you know, we, we, you know, we want it to be open, uh, when you're sitting under there, um, so that way there, you know, you are, you feel like you're outside, but at the same time, there's, there's just enough uh, of, of canopy, uh, given with the, you know, the pattern of the slats and the distance between them, so that, you know, you do feel like you're covered somewhat, somewhat. And also your, you know, your, the shade, um, you're shaded in, you know, the middle of August or July when you're out there. Um, so, you know, I wouldn't recommend, um, us looking at a solid canopy, I think it, I think it changes it both from a structural perspective and from, uh, and experience when you're out there.
I have two quick questions, if I may, uh, could you give us the estimated lifespan? The pergolas? That's one.
I, so, so there's always going to be some level of annual, annual maintenance, and the better that that annual maintenance is, you know, you're going to extend the life of the pergola out, you know, I, I think that, you know, this would be a twenty or thirty year, would be what you tried to, to design too, you know, again, uh, there's going to be some level of maintenance, just from the environment, from people using it, you know, and, and people kind of vandalizing it here and there, hopefully not. So I don't know, Rich, if you have anything you wanted to add to, to that?
No, I, I would, I would agree, and I think that the intent is that it would, would, uh, be in alignment with the intended life, lifespan of the park itself. And I think the Manning Park, the previous iteration of Manning Park was about a twenty to thirty year, before the latest renovation, so we're, we're hoping to provide a significant long-term solution here.
Thank you, and I, second quick question, um, and I apologize if I missed this earlier, the Woodstock that's used? Are we talking about tea, can we talk about?
Probably either Kumaru or Epe or another very, very dense.
In that same family.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so I'm, I suppose the reason I'm inclined towards one is because my, I went to Atlantic Ave, and am I correct? The slot, that, that type of design is similar to what you've represented here in concept one than it is in concept two, am I correct? At least the way, by memory of how the move, the roof over there was and the, the way it was designed.
I would say it's, yes, it's similar, it's more similar to concept two.
Concept one, concept two or concept one?
Concept two, the Atlantic Wharf would be concept two.
And Joe, we could flip to that last slide again.
Oh, yeah, sure.
The similarity there is the, the more irregular, um, rhythm of the, of the slats.
Right, right, it's, you know, you know, this has more, you know, when you're looking up that, that roof plane that you're looking up at is, is more segmented than concept one, it's, you know, it's more linear in terms of, you know, feeling like it's one ceiling.
And the top, in that, go to the top left, uh, the three slides on the top there, that, that's concept one or two, this, that section of the roof, one more over to your right.
This guy here?
Yeah.
Uh, that would be concept two.
Okay, and then the seating in the middle slide is concept one for us, correct?
Yes, right, right.
There was, there was another picture that I'd gotten early on from you, is it, is it over, it's close to the concept, is it over in Brookline, is, is it a, is it something you did in Brookline? It was, it was very close.
We may have, we may have been, we may have shown concept images of Brighton Square Park in previous meetings.
Yeah, that's where it was, okay.
And that was an angle, that had an angled roof pitch to it, so.
Yes, it did, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have been asked to choose between option one and option two. Does anybody want to, uh, Erin, I saw your hand up first?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just had one more follow up question, because I'm, I'm a little confused. So if either of these gentlemen who are before us tonight, were to plan one of these in their own hometown over a major highway with sound, which one would be better for our town to have performances in? Because I'm not sold on the fact our performances are actually going to be, um, well received with the extracurricular noise coming from beneath us, so gentlemen, if you could give me your opinion on which, which one would be better to run out the noise, I would love that.
They would perform equally.
Wow, okay, all right, well, I'm going with what I'm, my gut tells me.
So, Mr. Chair, let me speak a little bit about performances and things of that nature, and outside venues, which as Mr. Zulus knows, something I know a little bit about. I think eight years ago, we went to Hudson Field, which had not been touched with anything of any type, ever, and now run a music festival each year there that draws over five thousand people in. The one thing I will say, having been to numerous venues in the state and the region, the thing that I do like about concept one is, from a venue point of view, I like the way it presents the lines and everything of it, it just has a, has a nice feel to it presentation wise, when you look at those two bottom, the two bottom pictures, that's what draws me more towards concept one. The sound, Erin, here's what I will say to you, if you, from the field of dreams, if you build it, they will come. These two gentlemen have designed it, and I believe in my heart, we have prepared this park so that it'll be ready for food trucks, whatever. This is going to come to life, it really is.
I love it, thank you.
Mr. Zulus?
I favor concept one, because I think the seats in concept two are going to be uncomfortable.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm going to be bold, and I, I, I know I probably won't make everyone happy, but I am going to make a motion that we adopt concept one, subject to, I'm not subject to anything, that's just, my heart just tells me that's the right one.
Well, you're not going to like me, Mr. Wells, because I'm split. I love the roof of concept two, and I love the seating of concept one.
Is there anywhere we could, could we, could we do that?
Hundred percent with you, Mr. Chair, I love that, I love what you just said.
Rich, Mr. Chair, just, I, I could agree with that, Rich, is there a way we could do it that way? Could we have the seating of concept one with the roof of concept two, or no?
I don't see why we couldn't go in that direction.
If that's the case, I'll amend my motion to, you, you can, you guys work it out.
Yes, well, it's, um, we, we have an idea, it was been discussed, is there a second to the amended motion?
Second, as long as we keep the seats of concept one.
Yes, agreed.
I'm going to follow away.
Mr. Chair, if, if, Mr. Chair, I may, just before we vote for our, for our, um, very talented, is, I remember how happy John Cronin was the day that he found out that these were the landscape designers for this project, um, the track record they've had in Massachusetts and the region, if they could, maybe once they have an idea, just send it to us so we could see it, not that we have to hold on to it, that's all, but, that's it, good.
Okay, so we have a motion, I'm sorry, Ms. Busto?
I was just going to second that, that, I like that idea, that was my drawback to concept two, is that I like the roof, but I don't like the seating, and that other type of seating is much better, because you can actually fit a, a person in that corner. A lot of times, you know, if you've ever had a sectional sofa, if you've ever had one of those, that's perfect, I like that.
Uh, you just see parents wanting to put their kids right in that little quad.
Yeah.
That little curve, that's where you're going to be. Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded, no further comment, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Busto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes, thank you, gentlemen, well done.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and input.
Thanks, thanks so much, thanks.
We look forward to seeing this, uh, merge design.
Yeah, we're looking forward to sitting out there in it.
All right, thanks.
Which will overpower the noise, right, Erin? Okay, so we have item number ten on the agenda now, Mr. Berkeley, uh, discussion approval contract between Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and the Town of Milton for the Massachusetts Air Sensor Grant Program.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes, so this was a, a grant we applied for, it's offered by the, uh, Mass DEP that, uh, is a non-monetary grant, so essentially they provide air quality sensors to the town, which we would install, um, an array of across the town to get a sense of the quality of air, eh, in particular, to particulates, um, and, and get some actual data about what the air quality is across town, so I have to credit, uh, former chair Katie Conlin, she was, um, spearheaded this effort to really, uh, push this grant, and so we were successfully awarded the grant of ten sensors, um, and town council, um, had a, a pretty lengthy back and forth with the actual agreement, but has come to a point where we're ready to, uh, seek the approval for it, so, once we get this executed, they will ship us the sensors, and we have to install them, um, public buildings and, you know, accessible places across town, they need power and wifi in order to function, um, you'll see these in Mattapan Square and, uh, other surrounding communities around us, you know, have implemented similar systems, uh, it's part of a regional effort by DEP to get a, a sense of, uh, air quality.
Thank you, Mr. Berkeley, uh, Ms. Busto, your hand is raised, did you have a question, or is it remaining out? Okay. Any questions on this item for Mr. Berkeley? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Zulus?
Uh, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the contract between the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and the Town of Milton for the Massachusetts Air Sensor Grant Program.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Erin.
And, and.
And.
You want to go right, so I.
Yes, I second that.
Anne Marie, let's work up that boilerplate.
Yes.
Okay?
Certainly, Mr. Chair.
Okay, roll call, thank you, Michael.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus is yes?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Busto?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you, Mr. Berkeley.
Thank you, everybody, have a nice night.
You too.
Good night, Chase, thanks.
Item number eleven on our agenda, discussion approval of notice to proceed for construction of fire station building project for construction of fire station building, whether it's redundant. Mr. Wells, did you want to, uh?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair, move, move to approve the notice to proceed for construction of the fire station buildings project and allow Anne Marie Fagan, Town Administrator, to sign on the board's behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley, um, we have, Mr., we have, um,
Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Walsh is with us?
I don't see him, no.
Brian, did you want to join in and say a few words? Maybe he, uh, there he is.
There he is.
Mr. Chairman, I have been with you since seven o'clock this evening, actually, seven oh three, when you started the meeting. Yes, I mean, I just, uh, was joined as, as a, uh, anyway, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it, and thank you, members of the board, just a very quick, I know you've had a long night. Uh, so we're really looking for a few things tonight, notice to, uh, proceed. So we've, the contract has been executed with our contractor, we're thrilled about the contract that we have, we're thrilled to start building the, uh, Milton Headquarters Fire Station. Uh, I looked earlier today, the, the Fire Station Building Committee was actually, uh, formed in, on August twentieth of two thousand and seventeen, so this August will be five years, and we're going to finally put a shovel on the ground. Uh, so we're kind of excited about that. The, um, the construction will, the, the, the notice to proceed is dated six one, and the construction will commence uh, following today, uh, following your, your, uh, support. We are hoping to do, uh, we, we're planning to do a groundbreaking, I want to invite all of you as members of the board to that, it will be uh, nine AM in the morning of June fourteenth. Uh, we think the, the town has waited for more than a hundred years to replace that uh, Headquarters Fire Station, we ought to, we ought to make a little show of it when we, when we start that. We have invited, uh, all of the past, uh, living fire chiefs to join us, and again, we, we hope that as many of you who are able to can, can join us. Yeah, I, I think in the motion that Mr. Wells made, there was, there's basically an assumption, we are, we are looking for uh, some direction, and basically, here, here's the situation, we have a budget for all this, uh, Headquarters Station, part of the planning for that budget was about eight hundred thousand dollars, it's included in the, in the budget that would be for unplanned items that'll come up, and they, they do in every project like this, um, and there'll be small amounts, small items. In a perfect world, quite frankly, I was hoping that I would get your support to have me authorize the payments of those small items, do some monthly report, working with our OPM, uh, for, for the select board, of town administrators as well, and I would make sure that we're staying well within what our planned budget was. The reason I'd like to ask to have the authority to do that, uh, is these, what happens is these items will come quickly, they need to be addressed quickly, and we don't want to slow this project down. Uh, you, the, the town is in the middle of a process that we're going to select a new town administrator, and I, I, I'm certain that the new town administrator will have their hands full with all of the mirated responsibilities. I, uh, I could have difficulty trying to catch, they lose a couple of days. I can assure you, I'm going to be all over this, and so I, 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 I will get it done quicker. I hope I would have, uh, your trust and support, I ask for you, I'll do that monthly report, and we will not exceed that budget, we come anywhere near that, uh, during the two-year.
I, did we lose you, or are you?
He did, he didn't lose his volume, went right down.
Did you lose me?
He's back, he's back.
I apologize, did you lose me?
Just for a second.
Oh, again, I'm looking, I, I know that you, you're thinking maybe have the town administrator, approve those small, uh, change items, change things that come up. Uh, I would ask you to consider to authorize me to do that, I'll keep it well within, in fact, if you want, uh, change, uh, we discussed, uh, OPM and, uh, a forty thousand dollar limit on any, uh, approval, I would be happy to live under that, and anything beyond that, uh, we would be happy.
Oh, oh, we discussed that, uh, Mr. Walsh with town council, and town council advised that that stay within the domain of the town administrator, which we, and, and we really appreciate your willingness to do this, the overture and the time that goes into it, but I want to convey uh, that I did put out. But I wanna convey that I did put out what it is that you had discussed earlier as a recommendation. And Town Council felt that, um, that, that it should be with the T A.
Hey, well.
The Chair, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wells?
Not to, not to disagree with, I think there might be precedent here that the Chair of the School Building Committee, Mr. Winchester, was in fact empowered with that same power at the time during that project. So there might be something that.
True, and, and I, I was moderated during that period and was aware of that ultimately.
I do believe there is, the precedent exists.
And, and please, Mr. Walsh, don't think that anybody doesn't have anything but total confidence in you. This is a legality that was recommended solely. Mr. Zulus, you're recognized.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, I, I, and, and Brian, obviously, uh, I, I feel the same as what Arthur said. I, there's nothing to do with you personally, but I, while, while there may be precedent for it in the past, I don't think it's good precedent for the future. I think it really should stay within the domain of the T A. Regardless, I, I would've said that regardless of whether we get the advice from Town Council on that. I, I don't think it's a particularly good precedent. So that's, that's my view of it. And the fact that Kevin has that view, I think only bolsters that.
And thank you for the, uh, you know, the, the clarification. There's no concern with me. The, uh, and, and look, I'm fine with living with it. Uh, I, I have a long relationship with Anne Marie. Anne Marie, I hope you're gonna stay around a while. Uh, I'll be line to your phone in your office and, and I'll work diligently with whoever your successor is.
Thank you, Brian.
We have a motion on the floor as read. Was there a second to the motion?
So I think.
Richard, I believe you read the motion. Did you not?
So I, yeah, like, yeah, okay, yeah, somewhere the same. I don't know if that was seconded.
It wasn't, to the best of my recollection, so I'll seek a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Zulus, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Busto? You're muted, Roxanne. I think it was yes.
Yes, I.
Getting better at lip reading. And Mr. Doyle, yes. And Brian, and Brian, we can't thank you enough for your time. We have.
But, Mr. Chair, point of order. I think Mr. Walsh wants, did you, Brian, did you mention the date of the, and the time of the?
I did. Thank you for a reminder. That's June fourteenth at nine o'clock in the morning. And I'd love to see as many of you, you know, we all live busy lives, but as many of you that could make it. Uh, it won't be a long ceremony, but, uh, I think it's an important signal to the town, and I, I, it'd be great to have you all there.
And, and congratulations on a, a very productive meeting last night with the Neighborhood Association. I thought it couldn't have gone better. Everybody contributed. Uh, Richard, uh, mayor comments to make. I was really very pleased to see the evolution of the community, ongoing communications plan with the Neighborhood Association that you put forward. Richard, anything that you wanted to say about?
Well, I, I, I agree that my, my only point is to you, Mr. Chair, I, I'd like to, uh, ask that we invite both Ms. Conlin and Mrs. Collins to this, as they have been an integral part of the past four years of this project. So I think it'd be only fitting that we invite them to that.
Thank you. That's very sensitive and appropriate. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, if I could make one more comment, I.
I'm sorry. Yes, Brian, by all means.
Yeah, thank you for bringing up the meeting. I, 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 just as a reminder, the, the, uh, when we started our effort some five years ago, the Milton Center Neighborhood Association immediately started working with us. And I'm gonna tell you this, and this is not, you know, to make some politically correct statement. The design of that Headquarters Station is better because of their participation. And we're thrilled, and I can tell you, all the members in place, well, as our architect and O P M have been having more effort. Uh, but it's been a great relationship, and, you know, we hope building two more, uh, fire stations. And so we wanna make sure that this goes extremely well, and, and they're great to work with.
Thank you. And, um, you made the point last night too about downstream impact of this central fire station on the other two fire station projects. And Mr. Wells nicely tied together some integration this evening about the relationships of the fire stations and other work that's being done in East Milton. So we, we have to look at this as a whole instead of, um, discrete parts. Even though each part has to be constructed sometimes on its own. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, I love Mr. Wells, but, um, he kinda stole thunder, which was, it's okay. That, um, that I have really nothing to do with this, uh, fire building. And so I was hopeful that, um, somebody would put forth that, uh, former member Conlin and, um, and, uh, Melinda Collins and Katie Conlin would both be there because it really was them that made this happen. And it's not my place to take anything from them. So I would hope that we would invite all of those that made this happen to this night. Because i- it's, it's a wonderful thing, and it took many voices. And I just wanna make sure that all of those are represented that day on June fourteenth. Um, and thank you, Richard, for stealing my thunder for saying that.
Sorry.
And, and I was thinking, as well, if there's anybody else that should be thought of, included, and, and maybe, Richard, I know you've lost at these two members of the Fire Station Building Committee, and maybe, uh.
So Brian and I have already.
Brian recognizing them at that time.
Brian proactively has already done that, has already reached out to those that have been lost.
I should've known Brian hasn't been ahead of me yet.
We talked about this last night after the meeting, and so, um, the only other person I could think of might be Mr. Dennehy, who was Town Administrator.
Sure.
Chief Grant is, Chief Grant has been invited, all, all, as Brian noted, all the living fire chiefs, the past members of the committee. It's a lot of work.
Thank you both. Thank all three of you for what you've been discussing. Item number twelve on the agenda of, of Brian and Brian, uh, has been withdrawn on the recommendation of legal counsel. So, um, with that, we thank you profoundly for your time, your patience, and your contributions. Two nights in a row, back to back, and, uh, that has to be recognized as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ellen. I, I just tell you, thank you very much. All the best. I wanna get out of your way, because let me tell you, I watched your whole agenda tonight. Doing, I don't know if the town appreciates the level of work that some of these boards do, but you've, you've been terrific. Thanks, and have a great night.
And, and with that notice to proceed vote, we will be, uh, executing that with the contractor. And you will see some tagging on some trees and the, in the location of where the footprint of the building is. And you'll see some, uh, you'll see some activity going as soon as next week.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well done. Item number thirteen, discussion approval to retain legal counsel of Joanna Schneider, Hemingway &amp; Barnes L L P with respect to litigation regarding chapter forty B comprehensive permit decisions.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Joanna Schneider of Hemingway &amp; Barnes L L P as legal counsel with respect to the litigation regarding chapter forty B comprehensive permit decision.
Mr. Wells, is there a second?
Second.
A comment or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, at nine fifty-five.
Ms. Bradley? Ms. Busto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number fourteen, discussion approval, transfer of small business grants from Norfolk County to the Treasury Funds for the American Rescue Plan, uh, or you will, uh, Mike's gonna cover this. You'll probably recognize the two bodies that are in there. What we're doing is just, uh, a movement that he'll explain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the Finance Committee voted on, on May twenty-fourth to recommend that the small business, that the, um, the, um, approval of small business grants be transferred from the Norfolk County Funds to the, uh, to the Treasury Funds uh, for the simple reason that it will be more expedient and will help get money in the hands of our businesses faster. And we have the opportunity to do it, and it was recommended by our Finance Director and our Town Administrator. And, um, so we think this, this will help, as I said, get money in the hands of our businesses faster. So that's the purpose of it.
Mr. Zulus, did you want to move the motion?
Sure. I'll move to approve the transfer of small business grants from Norfolk County to Treasury Funds for the American Rescue Plan Act for the following businesses, P G, P G A M, Inc., D B A Fitness Unlimited, and David P. Electrical Contractor.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Busto. Any discussions? Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Busto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Discussion approval, recommendation of the Select Board Landing Committee to appropriate up to six thousand dollars to P A C Consulting for the design investigation phase of the lockup located at twenty-five Wolf Street, Milton, Mass. Richard, this has to be a dream come true. Would you like to say anything?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna be very brief. As you know, the members know, the Worf twenty, the Milton Yarkob, formerly the police lockup, is one of the oldest town facilities. Um, for many years, it's gone unnoticed as being one of our, part of our infrastructure. But it has come to light of two capital projects that will be pending before CPA this year and to assist us in getting, gaining approval for both of those projects. It was strongly suggested to us by the Historic Commission, we should take this step first. The final point I'll make of that is based on the town meeting article we passed in twenty nineteen. This now takes all monies, combined or made from rents in the landing, puts it in a revolving fund for specifically for the built-in landing. That's where we're able to take this money from, Mr. Chair, so that's, that's where we have the money coming from.
Sounds good. Beautiful music. We're gonna have that musical theme, Aaron. It's gonna stay with us.
All right, I wanna, so Mr. Chair, I'm gonna move.
You, you have the honor, Mr. Wells.
Thank you. I wanna move to approve the recommendation of the Select Board Landing Committee to appropriate up to six thousand dollars to PAC Consulting for the design investigation phase of the lockup located at twenty-five Wolf Street.
I'll have the honor of seconding that one. One, that one.
Chair.
So many years, uh, I do. Okay, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus.
Yes, but just a question, where, where's the money coming from?
So the, the, we, if you remember, Michael, in twenty nineteen, we had a town meeting articles. We're gonna take it from that for the revolving fund, the landing revolving fund.
So do we need to, does town meeting need to appropriate from?
No, 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 strictly by that, Select Board has control over that.
Oh, right, okay.
She has control.
Good, good, good.
So, Mr. Zulus, that was a?
That was a yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Busto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number sixteen, Mr. Zulus, do we have something on this item this evening?
No, we'll request that we defer this item, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zulus. Number seventeen, Town Administrator's Report. Ms. Fagan?
Mr. Chair, um, due to the late hour, and we still have executive session, I, I don't have any report this evening.
Thank you. Uh, Chair's report, I would just note, we have the upcoming high school graduation. And if it's a warm day, um, think about water and maybe hats and so on down the line. The, uh, K three three sixty committee ceremony is going to occur on Saturday morning at nine o'clock in front of Town Hall, for those who may be interested. And, um, Ms. Bradley, you have your hand.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to say that it would be wonderful for new members um, if we had a calendar of what to expect. Unfortunately, I, not unfortunately, because I love him. My son's thirteenth birthday party is already planned for, um, the school graduation weekend. So, um, I'm just wondering if there's a way that I can work with Anne Marie or Suzanne or somebody that we start pulling together a, a, a comprehensive calendar of what our position entails. I have found it very, um, island-like. And, um, I would love more information from people about what I'm expected to do and how that protocol works. Um, and so I would love to work together with other folks, including the school department, about what that looks like. Because unfortunately, I will not be there on Sunday, um, because I plan my son's thirteenth birthday. Um, I know, right?
Well, really so. And those instances occur.
I didn't know.
Well taken. I just wanna comment from my own experience, and then from watching new, two new board members come this year. I've had in the back of my mind this notion of onboarding.
Yes.
And have a kid.
Orientation, yeah.
Right, um, with the electronic world that we have, we gotta be able to do it. And, um, it would include a calendar and some of the protocols and things of that nature.
Yes.
We'll onboard new people and maybe even let candidates know.
Yes.
Ahead of time.
Yes, I believe.
That no one will run though.
I just, it's, it's a lot. It's, and I try and do my very best to do everything I'm supposed to do for our town and for my family and for my other personal endeavors. Um, so I'm sorry I will miss, uh, the school graduation. Gosh, I love it. I was there last, last year, um, but I'll miss it this year, and I'm very sorry. So if we could do that for our new crew, I would love that. Thanks.
On the agenda.
Thanks.
On the sidebar right away.
Thank you.
That, that was, that was an initiative of Tony Farrington back in the day.
Really?
It was, yeah.
Yeah, and it fell away, it fell away with Tony. He, he wanted a ca, he wanted a calendar of all events, and so we had it for a little while, but I think it fell away with Tony.
COVID didn't help it either, though. COVID count changed all our lives.
True that.
Item number nineteen, um, members committee reports. Any committee members with reports? Seeing none. Uh, number twenty, public comment response. I just wanna, um, go back to, um, Mr. Faes' comments earlier this evening. Uh, he did cite, if I recall correctly, the fact that the Cemetery Trustees, um, will be meeting in public. And I wanna get a sense of this board, is this something that we shouldn't wait to hear from them on? Um, before there's a discussion, if that is something that you want to have. And, uh, Mr. Wells, I saw your hand, and, uh, your hand too, Ms. Bradley? So, Mr. Wells and Mr. Zulus, okay. Mr. Wells first, and then Mr. Zulus.
So, Mr. Chair, um, Mr. Faes was, and, and I felt bad because he stayed on for a while. And this is, I think most people have no idea how long these meetings go. They're just so in-depth, and I saw that he did stay. First, I wanna thank him for having the tenacity and the mo, motive to come forward and say this to us. As Ms. Bradley wrote today in her eloquent email, this is Pride Month. And we talk often here about no place for hate, but sadly, from my professional life and even this political life, we learn that hatred still does exist. And I think that every time just we see hate show its head, that we need to speak loudly and clearly against it. Regardless, whatever form it takes, whether it's in word, in action, in violence, any type. There was, I did not hear the comment. I didn't know until, it was actually my wife told me when it happened. Memorial Day is exactly that, to honor those who sacrificed everything so that we have the freedom to sit here and live the lives we live as Americans today. Shame on Mr. Fazetti, thinking that he could use that or any public forum in this community to make such an inflammatory remark. And so, to the residents and to the elected officials and the public servants and the veterans who were there, um, I apologize to them. I am sorry, on behalf of our town, we are better than that. We are better than this. We are as good as the souls of all those who've given so much, who lay in that hallowed ground that we refer to as Milton Cemetery. And all of us who walk these streets live this community each and every day. So, Mr. Fazetti, I hope you do the correct thing, resign if you haven't already. And again, thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me this time to speak.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Wells. Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To that end, I think we should include this on our agenda for the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair, to that end, I think we should include this on our agenda for the next meeting, I think the trustees of the cemetery are meeting tomorrow. So I think we should include this item and and as a follow up at our next meeting to see what what action we may or may not want to take.
Do we have a consensus? I see affirmative from throughout the board, so it will be on the agenda, thank you. We're now prepared to take a look at the discussion and approval of the meeting minutes of March fourteenth in March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I reviewed them, I found no substantive changes, I don't know if anybody else had comments to make who were on the board at that particular point in time.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the meeting minutes for March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wells and Mr. Zulus, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
I I'm voting yes, because I think we need to.
Ms. Musto?
I mean, like, I'm, I would like to abstain because I wasn't there, I have no idea what happened.
We have enough votes.
We have enough votes, I think they can abstain, Mr. Chair.
That's why I asked if she wanted to abstain.
I would like to abstain.
Yeah, Ms. Musto?
Abstain.
And Mr. Doyle, yes, thank you. And I'm prepared to go into executive session on the on the advice of legal counsel. The chair will read both motions and take votes on them separately. Proposed motion is to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation, litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares, the board will adjourn from executive session, not return to open session. May I take the role, Mr. Zulus?
Yeah, I'll second the motion and vote yes.
Thanks, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Second motion, to enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy against the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority, MBTA. Related to the condition of the stairs at the MBTA station located at Adam Street, Milton, Mass. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. The board will adjourn from executive session, not return to open session, is there a second?
I'll I'll second, Mr. Chair, and just as a friendly amendment, I I think we want to say the litigate, litigating position of the body. As opposed to the negotiating position, just a, just a small amendment, friendly amendment.
Thank you for that. That is accepted. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Excuse me, it's getting late. I'm losing my voice, I'm trying, what's this, what's up? Okay. We'll now adjourn to executive session, and Lynn, would you be able to light the room for us, please?